Okay, good morning, everyone. It's Tuesday, October the 7th. The time is 9:31. Let's go ahead and get our meeting started this morning. Erica, if you can please do the roll call.
Commissioner Malika.
Here.
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio. Commissioner Baca.
Here.
All right, everyone, then please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
And the motion passes forward to zero. So we are on to awards and presentations this morning, and we have one proclamation. So I will go ahead and get started. So we begin our with a proclamation recognizing October as Head Start Awareness Month in Adams County. Our Head Start team in the Human Services Department works each day to give children and families the strong foundation they deserve. Research, research shows that when children have access to high-quality early childhood education programs such as Head Start, they have better outcomes throughout their entire education and even across their lifetimes. Investing in our children is one of the best things we can do to help our entire community, both now and for generations to come. And we are so proud to recognize the tremendous job Head Start does in lifting up our youngest Adams County residents. This month, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring each child and family in Adams County has every opportunity to succeed and grow and also thrive. Would you like to read it?
Thank you, Vice Chair Malika.
All right, so for the proclamation for today, Head Start Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas Head Start programs provide critical early childhood education, health, and family support services to children from low-income families, helping to break the cycle of poverty and build a strong foundation for future success. And whereas Head Start promotes school readiness by supporting the cognitive, social, and emotional development of children from birth through age five, and whereas Head Start strengthens families by offering health screenings, nutrition education, and opportunities for parent involvement, empowering families to support their children's growth. And whereas the dedicated staff, teachers, and volunteers of Head Start programs shape the futures of thousands of children each year through services that extend beyond the classroom. And whereas the continued success of Head Start relies on strong community partnerships and ongoing support from federal, state, and local funding to ensure every child has access to high-quality early learning. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims the month of October 2025 as Head Start Awareness Month and encourages all citizens of Adams County to work together to make our children's future stable and bright.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Malika. So at this time, I'd like to invite Gabby Sandoval, the Head Start Administrator for Adams County, to speak about the program and its incredible impact. Welcome, Gabby.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, county members, and friends. My name is Gabby Sandoval, and I have the privilege of serving as the Administrator for Head Start here in Adams County. On behalf of my staff, our families, and the children who are the heart of our program, I want to thank you for proclaiming October as Head Start Awareness Month in Adams County. For over 60 years, Head Start has been providing comprehensive early childhood education and family support to children for low-income families across the nation. We are proud to carry that legacy forward here in our community. The proclamation affirms what we already know, that investing in early childhood education changes lives, not just for one year, but for generations. Let me share a quick story to bring this to life. We had a young boy who came into our program shy, withdrawn, and behind on several developmental milestones. His mother was working two jobs, doing everything she could to provide stability. Within just a few months at Head Start, the boy began to blossom. He made friends, he found a voice, and for the first time, he was looking forward to coming to school. But what was just as powerful was the change we saw in his mom. Through our family support services, she enrolled in a GED program and eventually found a better-paying job that gave her more time with her son. Today, he is thriving in kindergarten. That's the Head Start story, not just preparing children for school, but empowering families to move forward with strength and confidence. Stories like this are happening every day. In Adams County, Head Start is not just a program, it's a community of care. As we recognize Head Start Awareness Month now in October, I invite everyone to be a part of this mission, whether by volunteering, advocating, or simply spreading the word, your support matters. Together, we're helping children build strong foundations and give families the tools to rise. Thank you again to the Adams County Commissioners for your continued partnership and for recognizing the importance in our children's earliest years. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Gabby. I'd like to turn the floor over to any of my fellow Commissioners that would like to offer a comment. Commissioner Malika.
Yeah, thank you so much for all the work that you and your team do. You know, Head Start is something that's just so important to our community, and any preschool education is really just builds our children up and gets them ready for their kindergarten years. All of my children went through preschool. I had a three-year-old who didn't even talk, and so she was able to go to preschool early, and she completely blossomed once she was in that classroom environment. So I really appreciate all the work that these early childhood educators do for our community to get our little ones ready. And I'm really just excited about our Head Start program here in Adams County. In Adams County, it's, we're so far beyond just affordability of childcare, we're even looking at just access issues. And so just having these spaces available for kids to be in is so precious for our community and something that I know that this board is really interested in continuing to pursue is how do we increase the availability of programs like this of early childhood and even childcare throughout the county. So thank you for all you do, and thanks for preparing the next generation for a bright future.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you, yes, thank you, Gabby, for sharing that story and the impact of, of Head Start in our community. Commissioner Malika said it very well. I just, obviously, the data I think is completely overwhelming, that the benefit of preschool for kids for school readiness, for socialization, and just for having fun and being ready to be an active member in our society, and it sets them up for success in school and career. And so I'm very happy to be part of a board and a county that are strongly in support of Head Start and that we're recognizing it this way in the month of October. And I thank the staff for all their work to, to help our kids be ready and have the best life possible. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. So at this time, Gabby, we'd like you to come back down to the front with any of your team members to join us in a photo for this proclamation. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment. So Erica, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
Everyone on the sign-up sheet today is here for land use.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that didn't sign up for public comment that would like to come down to the podium? Okay, not seeing anybody. So we'll move on to elected official communication. Anything from the board?
Excuse me, Commissioner, I think we do have one item for public comment.
Yeah, come on down.
Anyone is welcome.
Kids, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Phil Washington, 20530 East Saratoga Place, Aurora, Colorado. Phil Washington, CEO of Denver International Airport. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to be here today. I'm speaking on the One OK Magellan Pipeline and just wanted to state that we value our long relationship with Adams County. It seems like yesterday I was just here, but it was in May, and we appreciated meeting with you then. Here today to voice DIN's support for the One OK Magellan Pipeline project and wanted to share why this project matters not only to DIN, but also to Adams County residents and businesses. Since early 2024, DIN staff has been active, been in active discussions with One OK Magellan about this proposed jet fuel pipeline to DIN. Our work has focused on ensuring that the project minimizes impacts to future airport developments such as runways, taxiways, making sure it complies with FAA environmental and operation requirements and providing long-term resiliency for the airline's fuel consortium at DIN. We've coordinated with Adams County staff along the way, beginning in August of 2024, and we continue those discussions in 2025 as well. We see this pipeline as having huge benefits and the benefits to DIN, one of the largest employers in Adams County, in which has thousands of Adams County residents, of course, rely on DIN for jobs directly and indirectly. We see fuel supply is obviously critical to DIN's operations. A pipeline of this scale provides redundancy, efficiency, resiliency. And it's not just about DIN, it's also about Adams County. One OK's plan to include fuel lines that deliver gasoline and diesel, which would lower the cost for Adams County residents and businesses with regard to fuel and diesel. We understand the, the concerns raised about routing and land use and impacts to private property. I want to emphasize that DIN's property cannot accommodate the entire pipeline, but we understand those concerns. And so in closing, I just want to make sure that you know that we stand And so in closing, I just want to make sure that you know that we stand ready to answer any questions from the DIN perspective, but to also say that we support this effort in terms of pipeline. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you Mr. Washington for being here today. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to make a public comment at this time? We'll do land use hearing. So we have two land use cases today. One is for a day subdivision. Second one is for the Magellan Pipeline Expansion Project. So if you're here for those land use hearing cases, we will take public comment under each case specifically. Okay, so now on to elected official communication. Anything from the board? Commissioner Henson?
Thank you Chair. Hello everyone, thank you for being here today. I want to start out by saying thank you to our staff, to our County Manager and Executive Leadership Team, and our Department Heads for a very informative week last week in our beginning of our budget meetings. We were in budget meetings Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, hearing presentations from each department about their needs and wants and all the requirements on them looking ahead to the 2026 budget. I also just want to flag, out of transparency, as I have been in some previous meetings, that we as a county are facing some budgetary constraints. As many of you are aware, the state budget was recently cut by hundreds of millions of dollars due to some cuts in federal funding. These are pass-through dollars that are primarily, in Adams County, go to, if they come through the state to us, are used to support our human services work because in Colorado, the counties are the administrators of human services. So we are facing some constraints. We've also had some decline in our property tax revenue because of voter-approved property tax decreases, so that does have an impact on our budget. Also, with HR-1 passing, we're going to see more budget cuts that could impact our human services departments. So these are not easy conversations. We are also having conversations with external partners, some of our nonprofit partners, who provide a wonderful service to our community here in Adams County, whom we have long relationships with and have supported in the past. And we're continuing these conversations with them about what the 2026 landscape looks like. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware as we move forward with this because it will have an impact on our community, that we are committed to providing the highest level of service to everyone in Adams County, but the realities do exist that we have some difficult choices to make and some hard conversations ahead of us, that we are doing as much stakeholdering with our staff and external partners as possible to make sure that we're being responsible and responsive to the community. And so thank you all for being here today and being part of our public hearing, and we will continue to keep you informed as our budget process moves forward. And again, thank you to staff for your leadership and participation in a very robust budget process that this board fully supports to maximize transparency and accountability to the taxpayers and residents of Adams County. Thank you.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Odorizia?
Yeah, Commissioner Henson eloquently laid out a lot of the sources of, it's a stack of pressures that we're facing in our funding and in our revenues. And some of that comes from pass-through from the Fed, some of it comes through changes from the state, both that they relied on as a pass-through from the Fed, as well as policies made by the state to try to constrict, and I understand, to try to put some boundaries around property tax. Unfortunately, at the time, local governments were trying to explain the concept of unintended consequences and that while it was good for short-term for folks at the state to be able to wave the flag that we slowed down property taxes, we told them that the day would come that we would have these situations where things are going to tighten up and we're going to look back and say, this is what happens when we reduce our capacity to base property taxes on values. And right now, I don't know any property owner that has been able to tell me thank you for restricting those property taxes, but I can tell you, I am hearing from dozens of people in the community and families who are going to be negatively impacted by these things. And I just want to bring up the reminder that we have to have some systems thinking in government. We need to be thinking about today's solutions become tomorrow's problems. And how many of today's problems were yesterday's solutions? So I just ask that all elected officials, as you go through these types of scenarios and you're thinking through fixing the problem of the day, to think through those consequences and potential consequences because we're now facing a little bit more of a difficult situation simply because, not simply because, but in part because of some decisions that have been made over the last few years. And albeit, they were solving the problem that they saw for the day, but it's made it harder today. So I just want to, I'm the gray hair, I'm the old guy, and as I look back, those are the mistakes that I've made, and I just want to be able to pass those little lessons learned along to the folks of the future elected officials. Thank you.
Great, thank you Commissioner. Other Commissioners? So we started off our budget session last week. We had three full days of meeting for budgets. We started off with the CU Business School to come in and do an economic forecast. So they'll give that forecast. Also, it will roll up to the state, so the state will get that forecast. I think one of the soundbites out of that presentation is that after at least ten years, if not more than a little bit more than ten years, we've seen an exponential growth in property taxes and valuation, which you've all seen in your property tax statements. For the first time in ten years, ten-to-twelve-year period, Colorado is dead last when it comes to property valuation. So that shows a leveling off of property tax. So this is going to be our new normal of that we're not going to see those increases. So that was really interesting, so we're all adjusting to what that will look like. But that was one of the things that we started off with. I'm fortunate to serve with a board that has a business sense of mind of looking at all of the aspects of the budget, including budget revenue, budget challenges, our commitments that we've made, service delivery. So we have non-monetary improvements that we can also make along with the budgetary-monetary stuff that we are working on. Here in Adams County, we're open for business, and I think that's really going to be a confusing thing with our residents is while there are challenges at the community level that every community faces, that we're going to continue to see business grow here in Adams County, which is really fantastic. I see our union members are here. Thank you so much to Phil Washington with Denver International Airport for being here. I tell people when they want to know where Adams County is, I said, "As you fly in to Denver International Airport, we completely surround the entire airport proper." So we have a lot of growth ahead of us in Adams County. So we're going to manage growth through these property challenges, but we will also continue to attract a lot of businesses, which we're seeing. We're attracting a lot of nonprofits, and I think most importantly, we're still attracting a lot of students and families. So we are one of the youngest counties here in Colorado. Our median age is about thirty-five years old. The workforce, the backbone used to say, "We were the workforce of the region." We are now the workforce for Colorado. We've had a number of companies move to Colorado. We've done a couple of ribbon cuttings, especially at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. So we look forward to our continued partnership in the region with business and our partners at Denver International Airport. Thank you for being in our backyard, all of it, as it turns out. But with that, I'll conclude my remarks and we'll move on to the consent calendar. Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
And the consent calendar passes five to zero. So we're on to item number seven, new business county manager.
No items of new business today.
Great, thank you Dion, county attorney.
No items today, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. So we're on to item number nine, which is our land use hearing. We're going to start with the first case, PRC 2025-6, the day subdivision. So does staff need a little bit of time to adjust and set up for the next land use? Okay, so let's take about a five-minute break, so we'll be back at 10 o'clock for the land use hearing. Okay, the time is 10:00 AM. Let's go ahead and start the land use hearings. The first case is PRC 2025-6, the day subdivision. Good morning Nick.
Good morning. Thank you Madam Chair. Good morning Commissioners, Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. Now we're presenting the day subdivision exemption. This is case number PRC 2025-6, and it's located at 16722 Coyle Run Road. There we go. There are three requests before you this morning. The first one is for a comprehensive plan amendment, and this is to change the current future land use designation from agriculture large-scale to the proposed future land use of agriculture small-scale. The second request is for zoning map amendment, or rezoning, from agriculture III to agriculture I. And then the last request is for subdivision exemption, and this is to create, it's a little over six acres in size, but a six-acre parcel that I'll show you here in a moment on the map. This is a look at the larger site. It's approximately forty-one and a half acres in total size. Coyle Run Road is directly adjacent to the west. You can see Horse Creek Reservoir here, 160th Avenue to the south, and then it's right along the Weld County jurisdiction to the north. Here's a closer look, again, at that forty-one and a half acre site with access coming from Coyle Run Road to the west, and then Weld County to the north. There is an existing single-family home on-site with a couple of accessory structures, and you can see this surrounding area, and it is mainly consisting of rural, single-family living. So again, the current zoning for the property is agriculture III. The total, the entire area is mainly surrounded by agriculture III. There's some PUD with A1-sized zoned lots to the south, at the southwest corner of East 160th and Coyle Run Road. And then there's some A1-zone properties further southwest here, and then some A2 further east. Again, the future land use designation for this property and some of the surrounding areas, agriculture large-scale. This is parks and open space where the reservoir is located. There's some residential low further to the southwest, again, here where that PUD is located. And then there's some bits and pieces of ag small-scale, this little piece here to the south of 160th, and then some additional properties as you go further east. So when looking at the criteria of approval for a comprehensive plan amendment, we'd like to see that the amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the Adams County Comp Plan, that the amendment is consistent and/or compatible with the land use transportation and open space maps in the Adams County Comp Plan, and that the amendment also advances the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and property owners of Adams County. So here's a look at the map of that 6.3-acre parcel that's going through the exemption, rezoning, and future land use amendment. The remaining portion would consist of thirty-five acres, which would still meet the A3 zoning. So there wouldn't be any issues with the remaining parcel on-site. So again, that new portion or parcel would be located at the southwest portion of that site. So this is what the proposed future land use would look like if it changed from ag large-scale to ag small-scale. So again, just that portion in the southwest corner. And when looking at the criteria for a comp plan amendment, when staff analyze this, we believe that it is consistent with the goals and policies within the Adams County Comp Plan. The ag small-scale is designated for smaller agriculture operations that also look at balancing housing as well as agricultural production. There is no agricultural production on this site or the surrounding areas within this property. The site is also not currently a productive, I just covered that agriculture area. And the current and future well is for residential only, as well as some minimal landscaping and smaller agricultural uses. There's no property taxed, or the property is being taxed as residential at this location. And then the comp plan also states that appropriate adjacent land uses to ag small-scale would include agriculture large-scale, residential low, and parks and open space. So this would be consistent with that. The next criteria looking at is that it's consistent and compatible with our land use transportation in open space. Again, this is a single-family rural lot. Both ag large-scale and ag small-scale supports- Both ag large scale and ag small scale supports less than one dwelling unit per acre. There are, again, nearby agriculture small scale designations, as you can see on the map on the right here, and this is consistent still with our transportation maps. This is also advancing the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. It's going to be creating an additional lot, which the applicant has provided and told us that this will be for a single-family home for a family to reside nearby. And there would be no health or safety impacts by the requests. Next, when looking at the criteria of approval for a zoning map amendment, we look to see that the amendment is consistent with the Adams County Comp Plan, that the amendment is consistent with the purposes and the standards and regulations, that it complies with the requirements of these standards and regulations, and that it's harmonious and compatible with the surrounding area, and would not be a detriment to any future development in this area. So here's a look at the zoning map if this was to be approved and what that A1 six acre portion would look like. So when looking at the A1 Zone District Dimensional Standards, we need to make sure that the minimum lot size is being met. That minimum lot size is two and a half acres. Currently, it's, again, forty-one, just over forty-one and a half acres, and that proposed minimum lot size, or that proposed lot size is six point three acres. So it would be meaning that minimum lot size. And then minimum lot width is one hundred and fifty feet on well and septic or a hundred feet on public water or sewer. The existing is just under seven hundred feet, and the proposed minimum lot width for that newly created parcel would be a hundred and ninety feet. So when looking closer at the criteria that staff analyzed, we do believe that it's consistent with the Adams County Comp Plan. Typical zone districts for agriculture small scale would include A1 and A2 zone properties. They're still maintaining that large lot rural residential character that's in this area, and again, the property would be limited to one new residence. It's also consistent with our standards and regulations. The purpose of the A1 is to provide single-family dwelling districts with a rural living lifestyle, and it also complies with the standards of our regulations that I went through on the previous slide with the minimum lot size and minimum lot width requirements. And then the last criteria is that it's compatible and harmonious with the character of the area. Again, the surrounding properties are utilized in a similar manner. There are similar zone properties in this area, and this would be creating, again, that new single-family home that would not be a detriment to the surrounding area and would still remain agriculture zoning and a larger lot size. Lastly, when looking at the criteria of approval for a subdivision exemption, we look to see that it's consistent with our standards and regulations, which staff feels that it is. This is going to be a newly created parcel that meets those A1 Zone District requirements. And then the second one is that the subdivision exemption is a division of land determined not to be within the purpose of Article eight, Title thirty of the Carded Revised Statutes, and is consistent with one of the following, and just bolded out the two that it is consistent with, and that's that the property is the subject of the exemption request, may not be within a recorded subdivision plat, and it may not be zoned for commercial or industrial uses, which this is not. Here's just some photos from the site. One on the left is looking towards the west, towards another single-family home property. This is looking at the access to the existing single-family home on site, so that newly created parcel will be to the right here of that access. And then this is looking towards the north, towards Weld County, and then looking back towards the south. During the referral period, we notified property owners and occupants within one mile of the site. A total of fifty-three notifications have been sent, and staff did receive one comment that was in support of the requests. And there were no outstanding referral agency comments. The Division of Water Resources just required one note to be added to the exemption plat, which staff has had the applicant provide. This went to Planning Commission on September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. There was one public comment at that time that was in opposition, and they had concerns with others in this area doing the same thing and the potential for increased crime as well as higher taxes. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning map amendment as well as the comprehensive plan amendment by a vote of six to zero. The exemption plat only goes before the Board of County Commissioners, so they only saw two of the three requests that evening. But with that, staff has recommended approval of the request with nine findings of fact, one condition, and one note. And here are those findings of fact, and then the one standard condition and one note. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nick. So at this time, the land use process, after the staff presentation, it'll come back to the board for questions. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a presentation. The board has an opportunity to ask the applicant any questions. At this time, we'll then ask for a public comment. Then the applicant can respond to the public comment if requested. It's back to the board for Commissioner discussion and then a motion. So at this time, are there questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. I believe you covered this. I just want to clarify. So this newly, this newly proposed lot of six point three acres, you said it will be zoned A1 and taxed as a residential property, not as an agricultural property. Is that correct?
That's correct. It'll be rezoned at A1. And just, I noted that the current property is taxed as residential, so that would be my suggestion.
Oh, the current, you mean the whole, the current forty-one point eight is already taxed as a residential. Under, okay, thank you very much. If you can, if you know, if staff knows, the person who spoke in opposition at the planning commission meant, referenced higher taxes as a result of this, is there, can you discuss, is there a relationship there that supports that person's concern? If you recall how they stated it, or is there, do you see that this could, in fact, trigger higher taxes for the area somehow?
If I recall, he just mentioned the concern for higher taxes. The gentleman didn't go into details, and staff isn't aware of the potential for higher taxes, or isn't educated enough to go into that sort of detail.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you. And then how, would this lot then also have access, I'm assuming, from Coil Run Road?
That's correct.
Okay. Those, that's what I have, that's my question for right now. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Okay, not seeing anything. If the applicant can please come forward, and you can, you have time to make your presentation as well. Good morning. If you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
I am Deanne Day, one six seven two two Coil Run Road, Kinsburg, Colorado, eight oh six four three.
I'm Jordan Day, two one nine South Twentieth Avenue.
I'm Scott Day, one six seven two two Querone Road, Kinsburg, Colorado, eight oh six four three.
Okay, who'd like to start us off?
Yeah, we just want to divide a little bit of land off for our sons and his family so they can move out to, to the country, which is a dream of theirs, and they can also be right next door to us, so we can see our grandkids all the time. And we want just to try to help them out with the, with the land, with everything being so expensive.
Okay, Mom?
Same.
Same. I appreciate that. Anything else from the family before we get to the applicant, before we get to the Commissioners' questions? Okay, all right. Commissioner Odoricio?
Okay, thank you. As somebody who's living on property in the same type of scenario where we live on a former farm around family, I totally appreciate what you guys are doing. I have, I guess my question is for you and for staff. Like, is there a reason you didn't want to divide more so you don't have to come back for the other kids?
I think we had to have thirty-five.
We had to keep thirty-five acres.
If I could get from staff kind of the comments on that piece, because I still can imagine that we're going to still see another application come forward in the next few years, maybe for an exemption from that piece, or tell them, help us out here.
So if they wanted to create something larger than the six point three acres, they would need to rezone the larger property as well down to something like A2, which requires ten acres or more. So it was up to the applicant if they wanted to rezone more than just that smaller portion, but they chose to keep that larger.
So what I'm trying to understand, and this might be a tag team between the applicant and the staff, they want to retain the thirty-five acres as A3. And are there certain uses on that parcel that require it to be retained as A3 as opposed to doing carving that up and reducing the zoning from A3 to A2 or A1 in order to have more parcels? It's kind of a technical question that you guys might need to answer more than that. I'm sorry.
Sure, this is Jen Butter, Planning and Development Manager. I would say if the applicant is looking to, or was looking to divide into multiple properties, we would want them to go through the full subdivision process. So we're looking at impacts to the surrounding area, impacts on the infrastructure and drainage. The exemption process is really just, it doesn't fit necessarily within the subdivision regulations, which is why it's called the exemption process, which is why we'd recommended the applicant go through that, keeping the thirty-five acre parcel. This really kind of fits what they're asking for today. If they were looking for additional properties, additional lots within a subdivision, we would want them to go through that full, full process.
That actually makes a lot of sense, that this is a, this gets them to the goal today in an expedited fashion as opposed to the bigger bite of, a bigger challenge of going through the full process. So thank you very much for answering that. I don't have any questions. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions from the board for the applicant? All right, not seeing any, so you can, you're welcome to take a seat. Not anticipating public comments, but is there anyone from the public that has signed up for this land use case? Okay, anyone from the public for the day subdivision case? Not seeing anyone. No applicant responses needed at this time. Let's go ahead and start with Commissioner discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Odoricio?
I'll wait for everyone. If they want to make a comment, then any one of us can just jump in with a motion after communication ends on this. I would say that I'm going to go big picture, and I know this doesn't have a scope of just today, but I do think it's time for us to, we continue to get, we're seventy-two miles wide, eighteen miles tall. And, and we're going to continue to see that, that ever expansive opens land east of Denver International Airport continue to be looked at as a, kind of the Wild West. I guess for us, it'll be the Wild East. And, and, and people are going to start looking at, and we're already starting to see it, both industrial as well as residential to service, kind of the pressure release for what's in the metro area with pricing. I do think it's time, even though I know like Jenny and her team are probably like, oh, God, no. We just finished our comprehensive plan update. But I do think in light of the increasing number of applications that we're seeing, it's time for us to kind of do maybe a market study and find out what is truly feasible to look at long-term as retaining as agriculture. And rather than, and I'm not saying we're intentionally sticking our head in the sand, but we're kind of like delaying the inevitable of, we're going to be piecemealing the growth of the metro area moving east. And if we want to do it in a more managed fashion, so we don't promote urban sprawl, we want to do, we might need to do some more studies specifically on the future of ag land use in Adams County, and maybe to do it together with some of our partners like even Arapaho, because they're going to be going through the same thing. So I just want to plant that seed that it's time for us to look at this, because as we see this, this six, or six acre parcel is going to turn into multiple folks in that neighborhood doing the same thing, and then it effectively becomes an estate plan, and I mean, a state zone, you know? And I think if we plan it out more now, then we can run, reduce some of the conflicts and the challenges that future county and county commissioners will have in the future. So I just wanted to plant that seed. I have no problem with this case today. I'm happy to support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Henson?
Yes, I just want to support what Commissioner Odoricio just outlined, because as the old saying goes, the future is now. And I think that we are already not ahead of what's happening in Adams County. It's time for us to start keeping more apace with these requests as we have seen over the last several months, certainly since I've joined the commission. We're seeing these individual exemption requests that is altering, that are making alterations to our zoning as we grow, continue to grow east, which is, we know where the growth is heading. And so I think it's time for us to really do some very comprehensive planning, big picture, looking at what's happening and how we're going to shape the growth that we know will continue to be coming to Adams County. And, but I, again, as Commissioner Odoricio stated, I don't have a problem with today's case. I think this is flagging something very important for us to look at going forward now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mulca?
Yes, I second my colleague's comments. I think that really looking forward at our ag land use is going to be something important for this, this board to take up. So interested in having that conversation. I'm excited for the Day family and your ability to have the next generation on your land. I know how important that is to have grandkids close. So if the board is open to this, I am happy to make the motion for approval.
I'm going to hop in here real quick. I want to thank the Day family. I, I feel your emotion deep in my heart to have family close to you. So I want to thank you very much for going through the process. I know that this is of benefit to you and your family, and the process itself can be long and involved, both time and sometimes expense as well. So I just want to thank you for coming forward and making this subdivision plat for your son and your family. It's really important. I was an unincorporated Adams County kid growing up, and I just love looking at the pictures. It just brings a lot of peace and happiness and joy to go out and, you know, drive out on a dirt road. My parents still live on a dirt road, and they're in the middle of Brighton right now, which is their little island out there with their neighbors. It's just a nice respite to get away from the hustle and bustle of it all and to be close to family and grandchildren. So thank you so much for coming through this, and I would also support this today. So thank you so much. So we have the motion by Mulca. There we go. Second by Henson. And the motion passes five to zero. So good luck to you and congratulations. Okay, the next item on our agenda is another land use case. It's RCU two thousand and twenty-four dash forty-six, the Magellan Pipeline Expansion Project. Also, Nick, congratulations.
Thank you. I think, good morning again, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson, Community and Economic Development. And this is the Magellan Pipeline Project, case number RCU two thousand and twenty-four dash forty-six. And just wanted to kind of lead in with this, a little bit of an updated route that staff received recently. We received an update to the proposed route the week of September twenty-fifth, and it shifted a portion of the proposed route approximately one mile to the west. So I'll show you on the upcoming maps where, where the pipeline has shifted. And the applicant, I know, is going to go into a lot more detail of kind of the whys. But due to overall time constraints, staff wasn't unable to give a full evaluation and vet the updated proposed route. We also, public notice was previously provided to the property owners and occupants within a thousand feet, if you recall, and that was of the initial proposed route. So again, due to time constraints in that twenty-one day referral period that we typically look at, notice cannot be provided to any new property owners and occupants within that, within a thousand feet of that new updated proposed route. So just kind of wanted to lead into this update with, with that kind of update that staff received a couple of weeks ago. So here's a look at where the proposed route, as well as the updated route, is located. Again, heading from Denver International to the north, ending at I seventy, Arapaho County, to the south. The proposed route is that black dash line, or I should say, originally proposed route is the blacked dash line. And then the updated route that you can see here mainly shifts at east one hundred and forty-eighth Avenue. It still stays on this property within Aurora's boundary. It's, it was difficult even for staff to tell with some of the maps originally proposed, but just wanted to clarify that when it jogs that mile east or west, it's within the Aurora property or property reserve. So when it gets to the border, the western border of the property reserve property, it jogs to the south, all still within the city of Aurora. And then at this point, it comes back to the east a bit, and then terminates again heading south down here towards I seventy. Again, the teal colors, all within the city of Aurora's jurisdiction. And then this green portion here is unincorporated Adams County. So just to summarize the requests, again, it's a conditional use permit, and this is to construct a ten-inch diameter transportation fuel pipeline. Approximately five miles of that of the pipeline is in unincorporated Adams County. Then there's also a development agreement, and that's to cover pre-construction requirements, construction and operational standards, as well as maintenance of the pipeline. The overall project, it's a total of two hundred and thirty-five miles of new buried pipeline, and this begins in Scott City, Kansas, and again, ends at Denver International Airport. And this includes various transportation fuels, including aviation and sustainable aviation fuels. Again, that's approximately twelve miles in Adams County. Five of that is in unincorporated Adams County. It would be ten inches in diameter, buried at a minimum depth, depth of four feet, and would also include several above-ground mitigation valves. This did go to the Board of County Commissioners on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At that time, there were ten members of the public who spoke. At that time, there were ten members of the public who spoke and six of those were in opposition. Four were in favor at that time. You all, the county commissioners, voted five-zero to continue this to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. That was later requested by the applicant to be continued to today, October seventh. Some of the concerns and items that the applicant needed to work on addressing included exploring all alternative routes, looking at more best management practices, the allowance for utility crossings, restricting the pipeline from transporting any type of crude oil, future potential connectivity to the Colorado Air and Spaceport, also den growth and pipeline route constraints as it relates to den. And then the impact of the pipeline route for any future development within the area. So staff had a couple of maps that we worked on, just wanted to show you. And we did end up including the new proposed route, just to give you some context. Again, this black dash line was the original proposed route. This map itself is looking at the FEMA one-hundred-year floodplain, mostly along that Box Elder Creek area. So again, this is the originally proposed route. And then the newly adjusted route would be right outside of that to the west. And then also highlighted on here are some producing wells as well as multi-well pads. You can see there's a lot of the majority, the majority of these to the west area here. And then there are a couple at the very south end of the original proposed route. And then this one, we just wanted to highlight the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Priority Habitat areas as it kind of goes through the Box Elder Creek area. Again, the original proposed route and then this updated route here to the west. So a lot of the changes came within the updated development agreement, so I wanted to highlight some of those changes that were within the development agreement in your packet. Again, looking at more best management practices, so having a five-year smart pig integrity testing, as well as a SCADA system and remote shutdown. Pipeline coding was a topic of conversation. Also visual inspections and then having a pipeline cathodic protection as well. The applicant needs to also provide us with as-built GIS data of the pipeline provided, that's again, provided to the county. And then they would need the county's consent coming back before Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners for transportation of any sort of crude oil through that pipeline. Also locating and reporting to the county any oil and gas infrastructure within the proposed easement area. And then also the applicant cannot withhold encroachment agreement requests from property owners so long as the requests do not run reasonably interfere with the applicant's ability to safely operate, maintain, monitor, or repair its pipeline. And this would include things like driveways, parking lots, as well as utility crossings, which were a topic of conversation at the last hearing. So during the referral period, we notified again, property owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the originally proposed pipeline. A total of eighty-one notifications were sent. We have received a total of fourteen comments. Five of those were in opposition at that time, having concerns over easements, mitigating construction impacts, compensation, the condemnation process, as well as economic impacts. There were a few of those in opposition that withdrew their opposition and that was provided to staff just recently. And we have copies of those to distribute to the commissioners. We also received nine in support citing positive economic impacts for the region related to growth from den and also reducing and eliminating truck traffic as a safer alternative. And then there are no referral agencies in opposition as well. So with that, staff does have two recommendations for the county commissioners to consider. The first one is in regards to the updated route. And staff is requesting that this be referred to, that the conditional use permit be referred back to the Planning Commission in order to vet the proposed route and for staff to have adequate time to look at that, as well as provide new notice to property owners and occupants. Again, within a thousand feet of that new route. And then if the commissioners would look to have the originally proposed route as part of the recommendation, staff would recommend approval of that conditional use permit and development agreement. And that would be with eight findings of fact, two conditions, and one note. And then here are the recommended findings of fact, the two conditions. The one is our standard condition, the second is that all the applicant's obligations as set forth in the development agreement between the county and Magellan are hereby incorporated by reference as conditions of this approval. And then failure to comply with the development agreement may be justification for a show cause hearing where the conditional use permit may be revoked. And then there's the one note, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nick. So at this time, it's questions from the board for staff and then we'll have the applicant presentation following questions from the board. Commissioner Mulca?
I just want to confirm, so when you showed us the, the referral comments, that does not include the new updated route, is that correct? Or do these referral comments include the updated route?
That would be for the original route.
For the proposed route, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners? Questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Odoricio?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there were like four or five, I think, five things that I was looking at when, in the last hearing that I was a little concerned about. One of which is the route. I don't see a significant, I'm trying to understand the pros and cons of the route change to me. If there was a route change that I was, like, I think we were kind of clear, like, it would have been nice to see the route change happen actually on Denver property, not just moved a block to the west on, it was still staying within Adams County. The other option would have been going to the east where it would have been easier to plug into Colorado Air and Spaceport, because that was one of the other concerns I had was, can we kind of benefit from these types of infrastructure and utility just passing through Adams County rather than only handling the burden? So when you look at those issues that I was wanting us to address, one includes route. That also include product, safety, economic compatibility, and future integration. The economic compatibility and future integration directly connected to the route that if we, there was some sort of benefit for Colorado Air and Spaceport, that's where those two factors would have combined, meaning is there an opportunity for the spaceport to participate? And then the economic compatibility, I'm not sure. Are we reducing the burden with this new little route change? On the economic compatibility, meaning like imposing or impeding future development? Help, help me understand some of those two analyses. I'll be very specific. The economic compatibility, what's the, what's the reduction in burden? For increase in benefit with this small route change? And then, would you agree that this has no bearing at all on any sort of opportunity that I was hoping to see for Colorado Air and Spaceport?
Sure. Chase Evans, Deputy Director of Community and Economic Development, I'll take a stab at this and may call for help from my colleagues as well. Nick, do you mind jumping to the FEMA map? So one point of clarification is, is I think is, is worth making is the proximity to CASP. So the current, so both the original proposed route and the newly updated route actually are, they're not on CASP property. They are adjacent to CASP property. CASP is, the, the original map that you were looking at shows the CASP Aviation Zone District. But in addition to that, there are two additional parcels that are technically part of CASP and are encumbered by FAA requirements. And so it is directly, although it is outside the fence, as we say, for, for CASP, it is directly adjacent to the edge of the CASP boundary, which is that A three property. There you see, so if you look closer at that white line, that is the true boundary of CASP, although it's not all zoned aviation as it was shown in the previous map. So it is adjacent to county-owned CASP property in that regard. So as far as future connectivity, I know the applicant has expressed a, certainly a willingness to connect to CASP in the future. We do have Jeff Kloska, our Director of, of Colorado Air and Spaceport here as well, has been part of the process. And I know has stated, and he can certainly elaborate more, that where we are today, based on demand, it probably does not yet make sense to connect from, for, to this pipeline, but it could be something certainly down the road. So with the, both the current and the new proposed route, it is essentially at the CASP boundary and could be connected at some time in the future. To your second question about the economic impacts, as Nick was saying, we have not really had a ton of time to fully evaluate this new route. I will say that we, the, the letter that was provided just a few moments, moments ago to the board withdrawing some of those objections, that was in regards to the property that had a potential data center. And there were certainly some concerns around the economic impact. So those concerns, not to put words in anyone's mouth, but according to the attorney, those objections have been withdrawn. So when it comes to economic impact, we, we don't see that with this application. Also, within the development agreement, there was a lot of additional language that went in to help protect the future developability of properties, including some more robust language in regards to the ability to provide encroachment agreements. So essentially the property owners have an easement for, for the applicant of a permanent thirty-foot easement. The, the property owners have a, now a more robust process within our development agreement to request for an encroachment agreement, so the ability to encroach within that thirty-foot permanent easement to allow things like putting drive aisles or putting parking lots, things like that. They also clarified more robustly that the things that they're really trying to avoid within that permanent easement would be things like permanent buildings, drainage improvements, as well as permanent landscaping, trees and such, things like that, because they want to be able to maintain it. But we did clarify that if an applicant wants to construct a, a building of some sort outside of the easement, they certainly could use that thirty-foot easement as parking or other, other less permanent structure, not, not structures, but less permanent use. Certainly if it was a parking lot, that could be dug up and, and access the pipeline should be needed for maintenance. There may be more. I'll pause there in case there's additional questions, but happy to elaborate more if needed.
I appreciate those details that you said. Where are those are gonna be reflected, those changes?
Those changes will be the, within the development agreement. I can reference the specific section if you'd like.
Nope. I think the fact that you said that those are gonna go in as changes and enhancements based on our feedback to improve the protection of economic development in the future is very helpful. So thank you.
Sure.
That is a benefit of us taking it slow and thinking through it. So I appreciate the board doing that continuation last month. Colorado Air and Spaceport, I just assumed that, and maybe it was the wrong assumption, that it would have to be even a little closer to the buildings, but maybe not crossing the Colorado Air and Spaceport property is what we wouldn't allow anyway. So I appreciate you clarifying on that as well. I still have concerns about why, and this is probably a question for the applicant, is why are we not more on Denver property? But that'll be, unless you have an answer, but I recommend that you let them answer that.
We've discussed it with the applicant and I think they're best to answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chase. Any other Commissioners? Questions for staff? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the applicant presentation. So if the applicant, applicant can please come forward?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Brinkley, Snell and Wilmer, outside counsel to the applicant. My address is six seven five fifteenth Street, Denver, Colorado, eight zero two zero two. Thank you again for having us. Thank you for the, the continuation that was granted at the, the last hearing I was at. So we had more time to continue to work with landowners and staff. As staff noted, we, we made a lot of substantive changes to the development agreement, working both with, with Nick and the county attorney's office. I think the, the, the big one for the landowners is, as Commissioner Odoricio, you just mentioned, was more specificity around the encroachments and crossings and future development, when we will talk about that in further detail. Commissioner Pitter, we also went in and addressed the, kind of the five-year operation and best management practices that we discussed about last time and we put those in writing. So those have been addressed as well. And we will, we will again cover all of those things, but did want to tell you, we, we heard you loud and clear at that August nineteenth meeting.
Thank you. Just, just thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. So just as way of a overview and update since we last met on August nineteenth, we have attained a hundred percent of the route in both the city of Aurora and Adams County. We are joined here today and, and they're gonna be part of our presentation as needed, but we are joined here today by Den to kind of walk through the conversations we had about the route, moving more of it onto Den property and, and why that really just can't work with the location of Box Elder Creek and some of the future development plans out there, but they are here to address that. We, we did, as noted, obtain the right of way from the two landowners who did appear at the August nineteenth hearing, one being Property Reserve. Property Reserve is the, the landowner, as Nick noted, that caused the shift over to the west. And, and you know, that was due in large part to the fact that over on the east side, the Property Reserve had some oil and gas lease operations there. So we had moved away from the road on the east and so we were coming in closer to their property. And so as they pointed out to you all at the August nineteenth and they submitted into the record, we were exploring the alternative route at that time. The alternative route was the one that, that worked best for them. That was over onto the west, that was along the road. And so that, that worked better for them. It also worked better for their property, their second property into the city of Aurora there on the Adams County side is subject to a solar option agreement that, that has not been exercised yet. But the solar company has had conversations with Aurora on developing that. And so moving the line, we, we had found kind of the, the, the needle to go through that wasn't gonna impact that too much. But it made more sense for us to be over onto the west, so not impacting what they had done. And so that's what drove that. So to be clear on the, the new alternative route or new alignment, all of it is occurring within the city of Aurora. The city of Aurora is having us start back through their process, not, not completely, but to give them time to evaluate all of the changes within their boundary. No changes were made within unincorporated Adams County and no changes were made in unincorporated county, Adams County in terms of bringing new landowners on. So all changes that were made to this route occurred in the city of Aurora and occurred at the, at the request of the landowner. And so one of the takeaways, in addition to all the other items that were brought up at the August nineteenth hearing, was to, to work with the landowners. And so we, we went out, we did that, as you can see in, in what has been handed. You know, the, I'll, I'll say probably the, the most vocal was the landowners with the data center contract. All parties involved there have withdrawn. We've worked with them. We, we proposed a new alternative easement form that clarified more things related to data center development. So we, we wish them all the best and, and hopefully that can come together as they work through that with the city of Aurora. But just wanted to be very clear that, that all changes to the route are within the city of Aurora and they're going through that process. As to landowners closer to that route, there is, and, and Nick, I may ask you to go back to your, to your map. There was, there are a couple landowners. Yeah, that one, Nick. If you're, if you're going along the Property Reserve boundary there, there is some, some lime green there, which is Adams County. One of those landowners is Civitas, the oil and gas company, and the other is a, is a company by the name, I believe, B and D Painting. And we have been in contact with, with both of them and we can provide that correspondence to the county. And maybe, maybe we already have. Both of them had no objections. They were, they just said they were glad the pipeline wasn't on their property. So, so here we are. But Property Reserve has signed the easement and that change came at, at their request. And then as, as Nick noted, the other, as you get up there closer to the next unincorporated Adams County property, that would be Sable Farms. We worked with them very early on to, to get them comfortable. Their neighbor directly to the south is a landowner by the name of Farm Investments. And this change at the request of Property Reserve really benefited Farm Investments too, because we were, we were gonna go up the center of their property just because of the, the alignment. And this allowed us to shift up to the northern edge, so no impact to their development. And again, Farm Investments is in the city of, of Aurora. But, but we think, and I think the landowners would agree, the alternative route in the city of Aurora is, is a, is a better route for the landowners. It, it adds on distance for us, but it's a, it's a better route for the landowners. And, and as we enter into this long-term partnership with the landowners, we, we want to make sure that we're doing what's best for them. So again, we, we appreciate the opportunity to come back here today to walk through all the other items we, we have addressed based on your comments. But as we started, I just wanted to kind of walk through how we got here. It didn't, it didn't happen by happenstance. It had been kind of long in, in the making. And, and if you go back and look at the record from the nineteenth, you'll see that Property Reserve had submitted that, that map to you all as well. So with that, I will kind of kick- So um with that, I will uh kind of kick off our presentation. And um I'm joined here today by Joe Joe Butler from One Oak and also Aaron Sissel from from One Oak Magellan. And the three of us will walk through this presentation. Aaron's going to kick us off to walk through and kind of talk about the market need and the market demand for this product and and how we got here. This kind of builds on what we talked about last time. Then Joe will talk uh to address the um the contractor or the environmental performance of the company and also the contractor selection process, which was which was a point of conversation last time. Then I'll come back up and walk through the development agreement updates and then the route considerations um in more detail. Uh but we we believe after this is done, we we will uh hopefully, and you will agree, have addressed your your issues that you raised at the August nineteenth. And like I said, all those issues were great. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to work with landowners and the county. And again, just want to thank county staff for continuing to work through this process with us. Um so with that, I will hand it over to Aaron Sissel to uh to walk through a little bit of One Oak and and what is driving this project.
Thank you, Jason. Uh good morning, commissioners. Uh I'm Aaron Sissel. I'm vice president of commercial for One Oak. Uh also speaking on behalf of One Oak today, as mentioned uh just a little bit ago, is Joe Butler. He's our vice president of engineering and operations. Uh and I just want to start by giving just a another recap briefly of who we are. Uh so we are one of the largest midstream providers uh in the United States. We store and we transport natural gas, natural gas liquids, refined products, and crude oil through our assets. Uh I and the team here today represent the refined products segment. Uh this segment alone supplies more than two million barrels per day of liquid fuels. That's in markets, as you can see on the map, uh that range from the Gulf Coast into the upper Midwest and as far uh west as out here in the Rocky Mountain region. Now to put that into some perspective, two million barrels per day uh is the equivalent of more than thirty billion gallons per year. And that includes gasoline, that includes diesel fuel, that includes jet fuel, and it includes renewable fuels. Um when you consider our scale and when you consider uh our operating philosophy, which for us really boils down to running our assets safely and running our assets efficiently, uh we feel that we're able to keep our our markets adequately supplied, which we think promotes commerce. Uh and we also believe that that uh is going to moderate costs for the end consumer of of the fuels in in the regions that we serve. Last time we were up here, I think our senior vice president, Mark Rolls, I think he did a good job of conveying that the core tenets of being good neighbor, uh which does include community engagement. Uh it it includes working to keep our incentives aligned, and most importantly, uh being protective of the community's residents. One Oak views all of those things as table stakes, and and we hope that that is evident in our mission and our vision and our values. Uh but more importantly, we hope that that's evident in our actions and our day to day interactions in the in the communities that we serve. You know, I know a lot uh was said in the last hearing, uh and and a lot will continue to be said here today about the economic benefits of this project. And I got the impression in the last hearing that we really don't need to hard sell you on those facts. Really, I think the bigger concerns were that we could convey that there are not competing economic interests. In other words, that one economic opportunity would not have to come at the expense of another economic opportunity uh within the county. And so I think that, you know, what's what's been shared this morning already uh is compelling, uh noting that we have settled uh with the final remaining landowner who had expressed some of those same concerns here in the last hearing. Commissioner Odoricio, I think you said it eloquently and succinctly uh in the last meeting. Uh you wanted us to focus on assurances, labor, neighbors, routes, and big picture. Uh I'm going to kick us off and talk a little bit about big picture. Uh and I hope uh I'm going to zoom way out uh for a bit, so I hope I hope you'll put up with my TED Talk. Uh feel free to interject if you've got any questions, uh but I I think it'll provide some helpful context for why we're why we're here trying to do what we're trying to do today. So so what are we connecting you to and why? Um so the United States, if uh can I advance these? Sorry about that. So the United States is divided into pads, and for those that don't know what a pad is, a pad stands for Petroleum Administration for Defense District. Um these regions were actually created in World War Two so that we could better understand and track supply demand balances regionally so that we could ration oil during the war. And we actually still report out data based on these same regional divisions today. And so as you can see from the map, uh everyone uh that lives here resides in pad four. Uh and as you can see, pad four, uh in pad four, you consume uh slightly more refined products than you actually make. Uh so on average, uh you tend to be pretty balanced, but seasonally, uh you don't have a lot of margin for error when you have demand peaks. Uh they tend to be pretty hard to keep up with. And so here in the front range, just as another data point, you all represent almost half of the demand uh that that's referenced in this diagram here. Uh and so the region has historically, and in particular the Denver market, uh have historically been hypersensitive to any supply disruptions. And you really have to think no further back than early twenty twenty-three. Uh a local refinery here had an upset condition. Uh they had a fire, and that was, by the way, during a period of of low demand. Winter months here tend to be a little more subdued. Uh yet you all still saw nearly a dollar a gallon increase uh in in your price at the pump. Uh and and that that actually uh at at the same time, we were witnessing fuel that was being trucked from our terminals in Oklahoma and Texas that that was bound all the way for Denver markets to satisfy and augment that supply need. So you take into account some of those dynamics, and then you have to bear in mind that structurally, this region within the last five years has lost over sixty-five thousand barrels per day of supply. And that's been through refinery rationalization. Uh that was, uh if you look further north uh in Cheyenne, uh there was a fifty plus thousand barrel per day refinery that that went down there. And then you've had some general erosion in the overall yield of of the local refinery here. Um and there've been a lot of sort of, I would call them singles and doubles in the last five years in terms of capital investments that uh companies like us and our peers have been able to make to help augment that supply. Uh but it's not something that that we've fully been able to solve, and it's not something that we've that we've really been able to future proof yet. So as you've seen that supply dwindle, at the same time, you've consistently seen population growth during that same period, and and that's projected out. Uh you all know better in your county what that looks like here, but I can tell you regionally, if you look up and down the front range, uh our data shows that's been about one and a half percent a year, and of course, that does compound. Uh so we think liquid fuels demand is going to continue to increase along with that population growth. Um you may see some opinions out there uh in regard to gasoline demand specifically that show really a flat to declining curve. Uh we don't necessarily agree with those opinions, especially in in the Colorado front range. Um however, what you all have that I think uniquely sets you apart is a really, really positive trajectory based on based on everybody coming here in your demand for jet fuel. Uh so that that is a very, very positive trajectory, and we think that it's enough to offset. And overall, we think that the demand curve for liquid fuels is going to continue to increase. So now, take into account everything I just said, and then if you look at this map, look to the east at your neighbors. So pads two and three altogether, they make about twelve million barrels per day of supply, and they consume just under half of that supply. So they are a net exporter generally of the fuels that they make. Um and so okay. This is a, this is a busy map, so I apologize for for the amount of detail. Um I'm happy to answer any questions if if there's anything that's uh that's not legible here. Um but but what we're essentially doing with this project is we are improving your access to more than fifty percent of the US's refining capacity. So when you look at the McContinent region and you look at the US Gulf Coast, uh those two regions combined comprise roughly fifty percent of refining capacity. Our network connects you to nearly all of it. Um and I I want to also point out, I think it was actually mentioned uh in the initial hearing, but the US Gulf Coast, it's not just the most efficient refining complex in the United States, it's actually the most efficient refining complex in the entire world. Bear with me. There we go. Sorry about that. Okay, so a less busy schematic here. Um you know, I this was touched on earlier, but I I I do want to say it again. I think that there probably was some perception early on uh that this project was primarily to the benefit of Den. Um and I think that was really more in the context of of sensitivity around the route selection itself. But I do want to be clear, uh just for the avoidance of doubt, that that this project is designed um for for all liquid fuels. So gasoline, diesel, jet, and renewable fuels uh will will all be uh supplied through through this new asset. Um and it to us, for that very reason, we think is going to be beneficial to all Adams County residents. Uh and so what we've done, though, is uh with the scope of this project, we've also created uh we've designed it and scoped it in such a way that we're providing dual ingress into the airport. Uh as was mentioned earlier, uh we're we're single threaded here right now. This is providing an element of redundancy. Um and for Denver, Denver International, um you know, this project, based on everything I've just said here, it's going to create certainty of supply. Uh so not only are you going to have the second artery, uh but you're also going to have the diversity of supply that that I referenced on on the former slide. Historically, Denver International's been fed by a single ten inch pipe. Uh that pipe leaves our Aurora facility just south of here. Um and I don't know if it's been mentioned before, that pipe actually has space today to to handle more jet fuel. The problem is that pipe is starved because all of the inbound supply lines into the Denver market today are completely full. They're fully subscribed. Um so so again, what we're doing is, I'm going to advance this. There we go. Figured out how to do it. Um so so what we're doing again is we are building a replica essentially of our line coming from Western Kansas into the Denver market. That pipe is a large diameter pipe. It's a sixteen inch pipe. It's larger than supply demand balance today would warrant, uh but that's intentional. And then we're directing the end of that pipe directly into the airport. Uh so again, uh we we can provide that second conduit for the airport. Both of these design factors are really to future proof uh your your region for for capacity needs. Um you know, we think, as we mentioned earlier, that capacity, that I'm sorry, the consumption is going to continue to grow here. Um but we also want to highlight that we think that this line will be absolutely beneficial in the event that you see any future toggles downward in supply in the region. Um you can, you can see just if you look around the United States now, uh especially on the West Coast, even on the US Gulf Coast, which is the most cost effective place to to run a refinery, you've seen some rationalization. Uh and again, within the last five years, you've seen significant rationalization on the front range. So we don't think that this region is immune to that, and anytime there's going to be another step change, there's always going to be a little bit of pain as you ramp up. And so what we're trying to do is preemptively build these assets so so that we can stand ready to close that gap quickly, uh which again, we think is going to be beneficial to you all economically here here in the area. So um I'm going to hand this over to Joe Butler, um but before I do, uh I know I I went through that pretty quick. Um can I answer any questions uh on on anything that I've covered here?
Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes, uh when you use the term, can you explain the term? I have a couple of questions. What's rationalization?
Yeah, rationalization, uh simply put, is a closure um or repurposing of refinery capacity uh in in the context that I'm using it. So um you've seen uh a lot of refineries that are not profitable, uh that have low crack spreads today, that are also looking in different, especially if you look at coastal markets uh as an example, where you see quicker erosion in demand for things like gasoline. Um you see um more hostile environments, uh you know, in particular on the West Coast uh for for those assets. And so we're seeing, you know, a a slow trickle down in the amount of supply that's available. And so when I say rationalization, uh you know, particularly for this region, um that means things like what uh H F Sinclair did with their Cheyenne refinery. Uh it was, it was mostly a shutdown, but they did repurpose some of that refinery for for renewable fuels. Um and then what you've seen here was some of the yield creep downward with the local refinery uh has a little bit to do with the cut over to reformulate a gasoline in the Denver market here in the last couple of years. So um just generally, that just to us means a reduction in supply. And and again, what we want to hedge against is not being ready when those step changes happen, because those step changes tend to happen. Uh I I do think there have been some other markets that have been caught flat footed. I think you can see that on the West Coast today when a refinery goes down, because when a refinery goes down, you're talking fifty to one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand barrels per day of supply. And if you're looking at a region that's generally fairly balanced, uh that that can be pretty onerous when you think about the consumers of fuel in that market if if you don't have an immediate backstop. And obviously, these projects take time. Um you know, we started this on a two plus year time horizon. Uh so uh for your constituents to to have to wait that out for two years and experience that kind of pain, we don't want to be in a position where that's going to be likely in the future if something does toggle down here.
Okay, so thank you, if I may do a follow up. What I'm hearing is an implied message of you, one of the benefits of this is less dependence upon the single local refinery.
Uh that can be true.
Okay, that's kind of what I'm hearing both of uh from from the economic standpoint. Um that's why you talk about dual ingress, dual ingress to DIA. That means they're going to have the pipeline that you also operate to the west from Suncor to Denver International Airport, as well as this new pipeline from the east side, which will come from Kansas and other assets that have had to rationalize. So we're helping fill their gap in demand.
So so yeah, so so our pipeline from our Aurora terminal uh was was the first artery that I that I referred to. Uh and and from our Aurora terminal, we are able to bring in third party supplies. So that includes the local incumbent refinery here, but that also includes refineries in the Texas Panhandle today. Um and so what what this this pipe coming from the west is going to do is it's going to enhance the ability. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, from the east, yes.
Thank you.
Uh is going to enhance our ability to bring those McContinent and Gulf Coast refining barrels into the market.
Okay, that helps me understand. So first of all, the Aurora pipeline, the Aurora terminal, um Suncor plugs into that, and it goes through that, but it's also not the only, Suncor is not the only source for the Aurora terminal. So right now, we can get other sources from through the Aurora terminal other than Suncor.
Yeah, and I should point out that our existing line, uh excuse me, from El Dorado, Kansas, in into Denver today, um that does provide an avenue. It's fully subscribed today, but that does provide an avenue for those McContinents in in those Gulf Coast refiners as well. So it's Texas Panhandle, it's McContinent and Gulf Coast. So basically, the majority of pads two and three and and a good portion of those in pad four, including um your neighbors to the north out of Billings and Laurel, Montana, uh for supply that comes down from Casper, Wyoming today.
Okay, and so therefore, the new pipeline proposed today would provide some redundancy for both. Well, redundancy, um uh dual ingress provides both the security, fiscal security, physical security, probably.
Absolutely.
That that's interesting. Um can you tell me, just out of curiosity, I'm going to dummy this down. Uh it's a single pipeline, right? So how do you have different products flow through it? Does it all get like mixed in and then you separate it at the end, or how does that work?
We actually have a really cool graphic. I wish I would have brought in anticipation of your question. Um the the short answer to that is we batch those products uh back to back within our pipeline. So there's, there's an interface that's created between products. We call that transmix that we're able to pull out as as product delivers out of the pipe on the other end. And then we can actually restore the quality of that interfacial mix, um whether we put that through a fractionator or through a blending operation at the destination. But yeah, gasoline, diesel, jet fuel, and in some cases, some renewable fuels actually can batch, and they just, they just actually butt right up against one another, almost like a train within the pipe.
That is very interesting. I was just sitting here thinking, wondering, sorry, guys, I was just curious. Thank you. I don't have any questions right now.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners have questions at this point? Okay, so we're ready for Mr. Butler. Thank you so much.
Mr. Butler is going to talk about environmental performance and contractor selection process, and then I think Jason's going to close us out in our prepared remarks. So thank you, commissioners.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh thank you again for scared me. Thank you again for allowing us to come and present to you and for the 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 option of um working through all the requests uh and help, you know, bring more information to you to ensure that we're meeting your requirements and your thoughts and uh doing what's best for. and doing what's best for the community. You know, last time, we spent a lot of time talking about asset integrity and our integrity programs. Those integrity programs have been built over time. We continuously improve them to drive better performance and better results. A big piece of that is making sure that we're monitoring and tracking our performance. When you look at One Oak as a whole, as an organization, we use a agency reportable environmental event rate to monitor our spills and emission events. We put this in our ESG report. We publish this every year and we track it. Last year, we had a performance that exceeded our target by 55% or better performance than by 55%. And so this, you know, from a spill event, this is equal to greater than five gallons of releases. You know, when you look at our competitors in Colorado, according to the Energy Infrastructure Council, we have 80% fewer spills outside of containment than our competitors. I'm really passionate about the refined product side because that's the side that we're talking about here and that my team primarily operates in. And that's like 9,000 miles a pipe. You know, since the last five years, we continue to improve our performance. We've seen an 86% reduction in pipeline releases. We had one event in 2024, and that one event had was two barrels. It was very minimized and very small. We, you know, talk about the volumes that Aaron mentioned, that's a very small percentage, you know. So we are operating our assets safely, effectively, and efficiently. And do no harm to people, the environment, the public, or our employees. When there is an event, we still want to make sure that we're responding appropriately. We have emergency response plans. We have people trained in incident command. We have an all-hands-on-deck, we call it our Code Red, we talked a little bit about it last time, making sure that we are responding responsibly. Last time, there was a few historical events that were brought up, and I wanted to combat those openly and honestly with you. You know, violations, so the Clean Water Act violations, there was three events that were noted on that Clean Water Act violation. Those were from 2011 and 2015. Two of those events were associated with fabrication methods for, you know, low-frequency ERW pipe, pre-1979. When you look at that, that pipe is more susceptible to seam issues. We responded to those events. We addressed them, and cleaned them, and worked with reporting agencies to address those responsibly. But also, you know, the pieces and parts of those events that won't be present here is we're using a different grade of pipe, a high-grade of pipe, a high-frequency ERW pipe, built to the highest standards of API, making it less susceptible to those type of events. When you talk about the quality and inspection of our pipelines, you know, we're starting at the mill, going through the mill, going through the coating. Our coating is FBE coating, which is much more improved than some of the previous coatings that they used back in the sixties and seventies. Technology has also greatly improved. When you talk about the technology that we use to inspect our pipelines, the five-year integrity test, the smart pigging that we have written into the development agreement, that is hot, much better in its addressing susceptibility of certain defects based upon the vintage of pipe, when it was manufactured, and the, you know, the conditions. All that produces better results. Again, talking about the reduction in pipeline releases, that's what's driving that. The third event was associated with the Clean Water Act violation. It was a landowner who inadvertently struck two of our pipelines while removing trees. In that event, we went back and we analyzed and evaluated. And we took that to take an opportunity to make improvements to our one-call system, to make improvements on how are we validating, verifying our one-calls? How are we training our employees in the field to respond to one-call tickets? And also, what's our public outreach and our public awareness? Really encompassing, you know, all the aspects of 1162, the Public Awareness Program for pipeline operators, making sure that we're driving that to the fullest, to get the best results. The other event that was mentioned was a 2016 anhydrous ammonia release in Nebraska. This one here was, again, associated with a very specialized defect associated with the pipe material, the high-strength, thin-wall pipe that had a polyethylene coating on it, or it's actually a polyethylene tape coat on it. In very specialized conditions, this produced a bad event, you know, associated with us to seam. This was only, I think there was only three other known cases of this type of event. I think most of those, I think two of those were out, both of those were outside of the US. The NTSB got involved in this one, FMSA was involved. They did a very thorough investigation on this. And at the end of the day, when they start talking about our integrity programs, they said they didn't have any additional recommendations for us on our integrity programs. They said to continue your programs, continue to identify. And what we did was we took all of the learnings from that investigation and integrated it into our program. That way, we can, you know, mitigate and prevent these from occurring later on. You know, also, again, with the technologies that have been improved, these are the pieces and parts that are going to help us drive and reduce these events and capture these events on these old pipes earlier. But our new pipelines, you know, with the API 5L pipe, it's not going to be as susceptible. The quality of the pipes, a lot better than our old pipe. When we get to contractor selection, we talked a little bit about this last time. We have a very extensive selection process that starts with going out and investigating the contractors, working through those contractors, ensuring that they're going to be the safest and produce the highest quality, and trying to get a good feel for that organization. Twenty-one contractors were initially a part of that evaluation. You know, 11 of those made it to the next round. And then we, based upon that, we went through a competitive bid process and brought in the contractors for a face-to-face meeting, talked about their programs, talked about their safety culture, talked about the results, what kind of training do they do? Really want to make sure that we get a good feel for the whole organization. With, you know, that has safety programs, safety performance records, quality measurement experience, all of those are key factors when, you know, selecting a good contractor. And through that process, you know, we selected Mears Group, which is a subsidiary of Quanta. And their office here in Inglewood, Colorado, so they're a local contractor. When you start talking about, you know, Mears, you know, they brought a really good safety record. They had a low IR, they had a strong IR incident rate. They had a strong experience modification rate. They use small, local businesses, local contractors to help drive the community involvement and bring that value back to the community. You know, they use both union and non-union subcontractors. They have experience with these types of projects. What we don't want is to bring somebody in who doesn't have that experience and that can't perform and cause more impact to the community. And, you know, we really start talking about it, you got to have a great quality product that's going to last for a long time. And they have a really good quality program. They have a really good weld repair rate that's less than averages when you compare to their competitors, which really brings in a lot of great value for the end product. You know, by selecting Mears and you're thinking about the impact to the community, they've already estimated over a million dollars in revenue to local subcontractors and vendors. They have over 25, you know, subcontract employees right now, including union workers. They have 10 local office support staff. They're spending money in the community through services. And, you know, they're going to, you know, buy supplies and materials locally also, which has a big impact to those small businesses and local businesses. One great thing with Mears is they like to get back to the local environment also, local environment, the local communities. You know, being a local Colorado company, they've been, you know, a part of the Future Ford at Washington Square. And in fact, Eloy Martinez, he's a Field Operations Manager. He was recently named Volunteer of the Year for Adams 12, Five-Star Schools. And Eloy has already participated and been working on this project. So there's ties right back to the community involvement by this project and this pipeline project. You know, other ways that Mears gives back is through the Colorado Youth Outdoors Program. You know, they support the programs financially, they support volunteer hours with their teams. They also support Kenzie's Cause, Kenzie's Causes Bike Build, that one's always difficult for me. But, you know, ultimately, you know, when you get back into the quality of their work, the impact to the local community. When we talked about, you know, at the end of the day, supporting Adams County, Mears is going to bring support to y'all. They've already started that support today. So I think that is it on my part. Any questions, or would you like to hold it to the?
Any questions at this point? Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, I would just want to say the slide that showed the $1 million investment to the local community, that's a $1 million investment in Adams County. That does not cover Arapahoe or any of the other eastern counties. That would just be purely Adams County.
Commissioner Odricio.
Yeah, I'd love to see the breakdown of that a little bit more.
Okay.
And you are committed to purchasing all of your products and your materials in Adams County, it sounds like, when you say that.
Well, I think, yeah, they're buying a lot, Commissioner. And Mears is here to talk, but when we followed up with them after the August 19th meeting, they did want to point out that, just based on their numbers, it's $1 million in Adams County during the construction.
All right, we'll hear from them, thanks.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to walk through the development agreement updates. Members of our team said this slide was too wordy, and then I saw how Nick broke down this, so I apologize in advance, but I'll hit the high points. In talking with staff in the county attorney's office, one of the first things that came up was just making sure that Magellan was working with the county on any oil and gas infrastructure, especially abandoned flow lines, helping you all identify what's out there. And so that has been incorporated in to the development agreement. We will do co-locates before construction. We will identify anything. If we do identify anything, we will notify the county of it, of its location. And we've also agreed that if we discover any spills related to that oil and gas infrastructure, we will inform state regulators as well. So then, kind of going back to the best management practices that we talked about last time, we've added information in here that we will deliver a letter of compliance to the county, to the Director of the Community and Economic Development, confirming that we have followed those best management practices during construction prior to operations and filling of the pipeline. Then going next, as Nick rightfully mentioned, and as Chase mentioned as well, we did build out the development agreement to capture a lot of the language that's already in the existing easements about reserved rights from the landowners. And those reserved rights do relate to the future use and development of the property. In our world, the safe operation and maintenance of the pipeline is critical. So, you know, really, the area within the easement itself, we don't have setbacks outside the easement. It's really just within the 30 feet as it is in Adams County. So we added language in there talking about not withholding encroachment agreements, not withholding utility crossing agreements, so long as those two things don't impact or unreasonably interfere with our ability to safely operate. That is something we do as standard practice. We're happy to put that in the development agreement. As I noted last time, One Oak does have a dedicated encroachment staff. They have dedicated encroachment staff, employees here in Colorado. I work with them on a regular basis. I'll get into a few examples of encroachments that have happened here where One Oak and the developers work together to allow development to occur. So going back to kind of Aaron's original comment, we don't view this as a trade-off one way or the other. We think a pipeline development can occur along with future development. So this just expressly states that in the development agreement. Like I said, we are happy to do that. I'd also point out that we added language in there expressly covering data centers, just to make clear that that was not going to be an issue. So that is in the Adams County Development Agreement. And so if power comes and data centers come here, we will work with all applicable parties there. The next one, and this was mentioned, we did add language into the development agreement that we wouldn't transport crude oil in the pipeline without coming back and getting an amendment to the development agreement, also the conditional use permit. So that does expressly provide that Adams County would have a seat at that table to address the comment that was raised. And then lastly, to my earlier point, we did put into writing just our standard practice on asset integrity and other reporting requirements during the operation period. So those are detailed, the language has been negotiated with the staff in the county attorney's office. We feel it's very robust, and we hope you feel the same. But like I said earlier, I think it is a very robust development agreement and addresses all of the items that were raised. And we were happy to do that and appreciate the work that the staff in the county attorney's office lended to that effort. As I mentioned, we're, here are just a few examples of development that has occurred, encroachments that have occurred within Colorado. We've identified a few here in the Adams County area, one being the residential development up there in Thornton. So that developer wanted to build those residential homes around the pipeline. Obviously, that is going to come back, that's going to come with some natural setback there, but we worked with them, we lowered. And you see that, I live in a community over by the Aurora Reservoir. There's pipelines running through our open space, and there's pipelines to the east. And I can attest to the operators following that public notification process, sending out the mailers about the 811 calls and call before you dig and making it very known that they're there. So that happens. Another one in the center there in DeKono, a Ford dealership was built on top of our line. So that goes back to more of the parking lot example. We are more than willing to work with someone who wants to build that. We would just need the rights to come back in there and dig up if we need to repair or maintain. But that's a great example of having pretty significant economic development occur on top of the pipeline and the two not being mutually exclusive. Again, in Thornton and even closer to DIA, we have relocated. We we have relocated or lowered our line with the expansion of light rail. And so that that works, that works harmoniously together. The one in the bottom right is the Costco in Parker, if you're familiar with that. A Magellan pipeline runs through the middle of that parking lot as well, and that line was there a long time before. The Costco, so so nothing slowed down there, and I would I would mention that a whole foods is being built out there near that, there's apartments being built. All sorts of development, so again, it shows that these things can coexist. And lastly, this happens all over eastern Colorado, including in in Adams County, but we we showed one here in Lincoln County, but with. Solar farms and wind farms, we are constantly working with those developers just to make sure that there's no issues there, and and the parties. Work very well together. Also wanted to show a few examples of. Data center development near pipelines. And and these are great examples of how this is happening all over the country. That one in the bottom left, the Stargate data center there in Abilene, Texas, that was that was all over the news. This weekend, that is a very large project, and that is part of the the ever-increasing demand and competition. From kind of the leading players in the data center world. And so that that is a Magellan line running very close to what arguably is the largest data center in the country right now. The one in the right, that's a data center within thirty-five feet of the pipeline. And then just other examples of two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-fifty and and seven-hundred feet, so. Just wanted to show the county those examples as as just kind of a testament and and proof these two things can go exist. And especially as as data centers continue to emerge, I know. The energy providers along the front range have already indicated to the PUC that that there is not enough supply here to to meet that growing demand. Likely some of that demand is gonna have to be filled in by natural gas, natural gas is is a leading fuel. Provider to data centers, and so that just kind of goes to show that the two pipeline and the data centers work really well together. Alright, just to kind of recap where we where we were at August nineteenth about the. The routes that we evaluated. The the first route is that route that's far east in Adams County, that kind of loops back around. As we noted, that that one impacted the most landowners. It's it's beginning point was really impacting some residential development there in Bennett, so you know, that wasn't ideal. The next one is the one with the the red dots on it, those those red dots. Were wildlife habitat and some some other issues that we ran at in the field during our environmental. And and cultural testing, so then that led us over to what what we're calling our preferred route. Our preferred route is is what's before you today, as I noted, the preferred route has shifted. To the west on three properties, they're right as you enter into the city of Aurora. But the preferred route has not changed in unincorporated Adams County. This is a very busy map, and I apologize for that, but I think Commissioner Odricio, this this is. A a map to to really get to the crux of the issues you raised, and so as I noted before. And as I make my way through, we we have invited representatives of DEN. To be here today to to answer some of your questions and to speak during our presentation, did wanna thank. Phil Washington for for his comments, and I appreciate the commissioners for letting him make those comments during. The unrelated public comment portion of this, as his schedule was getting tied up. But, so this map, if you're down here. The the original proposed route, as as Nick described it, what, sorry, would come up right through here. And as I noted earlier, we did that to stay along the road, cuz the the road is a disturbed corridor. There's there's utilities there, there's other things there. But as I mentioned, this landowner right here, property reserve, you know. Said, well, hey, you're you're coming in to our property, like that, and and there was a good reason for that, they they had existing. Infrastructure and equipment out there related to, I believe, his oil and gas build services, and I think those leases were fifteen to twenty years, so it wasn't like that was just gonna. Change overnight, so we we were planning to address that. And then on this property here, this is the, this is where they have the solar farm option, and so. In talking with them, they said, you know. It's just more appealing if you come over here, so we we shifted to the west here. And then the landowner here is Prosper Farms, Prosper Farms was fine shifting, and again, all of these are in the city of Aurora. And and so that that got us to that alignment, and then it worked, it it worked for the the next landowner. Farm investments, and then Sable Farms right here is the first little bit of unincorporated Adams County, and and again, that did not change. So, from our August nineteenth meeting, based on the comments. We we did go and evaluate if we could go here to get onto DEN property. To do that would require us to cross two or three landowners that we we had not spoken with. And doing that is always unique, cuz they're gonna say, why, why are you coming to me, why don't you go to the route that you first proposed? And so before exploring that too far, we went and talked to DEN and. And said, you know, what what's the likelihood of of doing anything here? And as DEN will will talk to. This area right here is difficult for them, first, Box Elder Creek. Box Elder Creek, as we all know, is a seasonal flow, and when it's when it's heavy rains, it can flood. And so, you know, having anything here is not ideal. And then DEN with future plans that they can speak to, they may have to change the grade, they may they may. Need us to be further away, and so it it just wasn't gonna work in terms of compatibility. With the the creek and with their future development plans, and so that's that's why we asked them. To join us today, so you you could hear from them other rather than us trying to try to put words in their mouth. So that gets us back now to your earlier comment, Commissioner Odricio, about the Colorado Air and Spaceport. And we wanted to stick as close as possible to this route. Because, as as Nick noted, right here is part of the Colorado Air and Spaceport property. And so we are right across the road, and I believe, and and I, Nick can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe those two tracks there are county-owned property, and so when the day comes. If Colorado Air and Spaceport needs more fuel or wants to connect, we connected with them in early September. They did confirm they didn't have that need right now, but if that changed, they would contact us, we would be located. Just at the right spot, that would all it would require is just an easement with the county over county-owned property. To get to the Colorado Air and Spaceport, so no impact to other Adams County landowners, which we heard you loud and clear. You didn't want that either, so. That that led us to continue to to wanna stay on, and we had acquired all of this. And then this was the the last landowner, the the Dankos, who were under contract with the data center developer. Based on their comments, you know, they they too asked, why couldn't we come over here? As I said, DEN, that that wasn't working for DEN, but the issue we had there is getting over there. Was going to be difficult. This this landowner only wanted us on that east side. This landowner had. Or this one right here, sorry, this one had some solar farm development already occurred right there, and so we couldn't, we couldn't come across their. Property, and so, you know, we were we were somewhat hamstrung because again, we wanted to stay close to to this point with the spaceport. And so then that led us to exploring, what if we moved east? And. Moving east, we explored it, right here XL has a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot. Transmission line easement, outside of that, there is a pipeline company with an easement. And then immediately next to that, right up here is a landowner in their in is their home. So that that easement area is is already spoken for, and so. To to address that, we were gonna have to go further to the east. And if you go further to the east on these tracks, you run into some subdivision out here, I'd say five acre probably. And so so you're gonna bring on, I think, just by our count, you have the potential bringing on thirteen new landowners in unincorporated Adams County. Some of some of them right here, right next, these two, we we spoke to them. I won't put words in their mouth, they weren't opposed per se, but they they weren't real excited either. And we we did stop the conversation once we realized that there was gonna be a whole lot more landowners out there. So I say I say all that, just to reiterate that we we did explore. We did hear you loud and clear from our August nineteenth meeting, we did the diligence. We we even went out and did some environmental survey work to see if any of those things were gonna be problematic for us. And and it just, there was not a good path forward. And and so fortunately, we were able to reach an agreement that worked for everybody on this property. And then get to a hundred percent acquired. The other thing I like to kind of point out on this map. As I said, it's very busy, but it also shows just kind of the complexity of everything that is going on in Adams County, and and you you guys know this. But, you know, right here is City of Aurora's Renewable Energy Park, so that that was off limits, there was restrictions there. Over this way, there were oil and gas operational wells. There's there's existing, these purple lines are existing pipelines, and so, you know, just trying to cross that and 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 work with those companies. But up here, when you get into unincorporated Adams County, all of these purple lines are just based on our diligence. You know, flow lines, gathering lines, what have you, so it kind of shows the compatibility of what's already happening out there, and as I said. In the development agreement, as we go out there to locate, if we discover that any of these are abandoned. Or aren't operational, we'll notify the county of that, and and then you guys can have that for for your for your records. But this this also goes to show that, you know, in unincorporated Adams, so here, here, and then up through here. Like we've said, it's it's approximately five miles of pipe, DEN has approximately six miles of pipe on its property. The the location of Box Elder Creek really had impacts on putting more over there. It would likely result in a relocation in the future due to flooding or any other changes with Box Elder Creek. And so we continue to believe the original proposed route that has not been changed in unincorporated Adams County. Continues to be the the most direct route practical and and the, you know, the most efficient route. For the project to reach DEN and and limit its impact on landowners in Adams County.
If I might, Madam Chair.
Yes, then we'll have, we'll continue with the presentation, and it'll come to the board for questions.
Yeah, I just, I'm gonna ask later than that we come back to this slide, I wanna understand more about the sections one, twelve, and thirteen that you said. They just didn't wanna do it, I'll ask about that later, I just wanna come back to that, so go ahead and continue your presentation.
That that's it, at this time, I'll invite Brody Ayers from DEN to come up and join if if. There's anything DEN wants to say.
Just it's just just a question, clarifying question on procedure, thank you. Love to hear anyone that applicant puts forward, just curious about the distinction between applicant's presentation and public comment. Just a question for the chair. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, if I may, I mean, we we're we're happy to go either way on that, just based last time that that you were here, or we were here. Some of your questions, we we told DEN in advance that we thought it it probably was more appropriate for them to speak, so in the event there was Q and A. They could engage in that, which would not necessarily be the case in public comment. That that was our reasoning and our discussion with the staff, but that's a very fair point.
Great, thank you for that, I'm gonna defer to the the county attorney, it seems like I'll I'll defer to you, and then I'll I'll have a comment.
I think that it is a little bit of an unusual situation, normally I would agree that I think if it's not the applicant, they should speak in public comment. But I think since the board specifically asked this applicant to bring this information, it probably makes sense to allow it today.
For the clarifying question, unless you wanna respond to her, so I'll just queue up further clarifying question when you're done.
I'm inclined to accept. We oftentimes have subject matter experts speak with the applicant, and I think through that lens, I would allow DEN. To speak, what was your question, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, follow-up question. I understand the subject matter expert response and inclusion in the applicant's presentation, I really appreciate the county attorney weighing in. I see a number of individuals here from the city and county of Denver in their their various roles. And I'm just kind of curious what that balance is, a part of the applicant's presentation, part of public comment, and how they're gonna split the time, it doesn't matter to us at all. So is everyone gonna be part of the applicant's presentation, or some gonna be public comment, and what is the difference, and do we care?
Yeah, if I may, excellent question, our our thanking on that in talking with DEN, obviously, Phil Washington. Spoke during public comment, hi- his was more of general support. From the August nineteenth hearing, it was very clear, you you all wanted to hear the reasons, and so we we asked them. Them being DEN to to come up and be available to answer if there's any technical or planning questions that that we couldn't speak to. And so they, everyone here on DEN's behalf, and they're joined by someone from the mayor's office as well in support. They they aren't here to talk or answer every question, but but Brody, who is going to speak, would be here to talk about the kind of technical. And and planning issue, so that that's how it was divided up.
I appreciate that, any objections from the board? I'm inclined to have Denver International Airport speak.
That's fine with me as well, thank you, and I understand the subject matter expertise, like component of it, great, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Brody Ayers, I'm the airport planning manager for the land side, so I wanted to thank you for allowing us to come up and and talk about what we. See as the opportunities and challenges with this, I also wanna thank all the staff from the airport here, and especially. Adam Paul from the City and County of Denver's mayor's office is also here to support, and it's around, just wanna, you know. This map is great, but we'll go back to the other one, but first, wanna thank the nearly ten thousand employees. From Adams County that are badge employees at the airport, that come out to the airport every day and help us out run in partnership. Also wanna thank the the Adams County staff, we've been in partnership with them for a long time doing bi-monthly meetings. One of the top topics of conversation has been this pipeline, others around transportation projects and other land use and development, also wanna thank. The commission for overseeing zoning and protecting the airport and airports airspace and future opportunities for development. Along that line of partnerships, the airport's been leaning into partnerships over the last couple of years, really benefiting Adams County and Adams County citizens. Working on the Prairies Pipeline for water to bring water from northern Colorado across airport property to Adams County citizens. Also working with Denver Water to connect water from the northern part of the airport to Aurora Pump Station to allow. More water and redundancy for the citizens of Adams County, and also, and and they're working with the. And also, and, and they're working with the Second Creek Interceptor to bring uh sanitary sewer from Adams County across Denver Airport property. Uh, up to be um refined, if you will. Um, so uh within there, uh, when, when Oak came to us and said, hey. Uh, we're looking to do a redundancy project that we were thankful for that as well. Uh, right now we have. One pipeline that feeds our fuel system at the airport and then aviation redundancy is key to everything you do. So with, as you can see at the airport, we have challenges with the train once in a while, right? And so with that, that's not a redundant system. And so with, if you have, as one mentioned, they had a landowner who. Uh, broke the pipeline. And if we saw that happen for our jet fuel line, it'd be detrimental to the airport. So having redundancy for this pipeline is key. So, but right now there's six miles of pipeline on the airport, right? So there's two things that are impeding additional pipeline coming onto the airport. That's planning out for airport uh future runways and taxiways uh in partnership with uh our regional. Uh, counterparts, also with our airlines and FAA. So we work quite a bit with FAA around operational needs. Uh, as we look at our airport layout plan. There are six current runways at the airport and we're planning to have additional six uh laid out. Within the airport um forecast there, that's been approved by the FAA, we're looking at increasing operations and passengers coming through the airport. Right now we're over eighty million passengers coming through the airport on an annual basis. And to accommodate that, we're looking at adding. Uh, additional runway capacity. Uh, with that, we're working through initial uh environmental processes, talking to our stakeholders and partners from the FAA to airlines. Uh, the big part of where these runways will be placed is based upon uh operational needs of the FAA. So although the runways are placed on the airport layout plan today, they could shift based on those operational needs. So with that need to shift, we are looking at easternmost runway. As you can see, uh, this yellow one here in twenty, twenty-six, twenty-five uh sections. If that were to shift, that would, uh, it could possibly shift to the east, it could possibly shift to the south. Depends on those operational needs of the FAA, how to manage the traffic of the aircraft. Uh, so that was our concern of, of not putting that on the eastern boundary as that runway could shift and needed capacity. Need that ability to problem solve out where we can place that runway and put it in a place that's best for. The region and the FAA and the airport. Also within there, it's mentioned a number of times, right? Box Elder Creek, uh, twenty twenty-three has some challenges. Box Elder Creek. That flooded, it took out fifty-six in Hudson in Adams County and also took out a couple of service roads at the airport. Uh, in support for Aurora in Adams County, then the airport wrote a letter of support to receive grant funding to help prepare fifty-six. And as our friends at the Colorado Air Sports uh Port know, it's challenging to get back and forth on fifty-six, so that's closed. Uh, and really impedes economic development in that area. So as the airport leans in and helps support that, that redevelopment of that road there as well to benefit Adams County. So that, our big concern with uh Box Elder is that if you were to run. The onside of the properties, the grays, the airport property, the red line is the city and county boundary. So if you run on the side of the, the property, you're now um adding over a mile of that pipeline. Into the waterway, into the repairing area and flood plain. Um, there's a critical habitat for, from the common parts of wildlife. Uh, there's a migration corridor and there's also a number of bald eagle nests along that corridor too. So those are our biggest concerns, right? Looking at future development of the runways, making sure we meet the FAA's. Operational needs and our airlines' needs and also protecting that waterway so that um we don't end up with other challenges like we saw in twenty twenty-three.
Great, thank you so much.
So, you know, in conclusion. As I already noted, we, we continue to believe uh the proposed route. And again, the proposed route does not change at all. In unincorporated Adams County is the most direct uh and lowest impact route to the landowners. Uh, we have acquired a hundred percent in Adams County in the City of Aurora. Uh, as mentioned, we've uh awarded the, the, the construction contract to the local contractor with ties in Adams County. And um, in, in a, uh, a commitment doing business in Adams County. And we, One Oak has demonstrated its commitment to save, reliable and environmentally responsible operations of the pipeline. So with, with all of that and ensuring future economic development in Adams County, we, like I said, we believe those two things can go together. With the pipeline, we believe this pipeline leads to economic development. Um, in Adams County with the airport and with, with the airlines um who, who are also here today. Uh, we, we just asked the commissioners to approve uh the proposed route through Adams County before you today.
Great, thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate it. So at this time, we're gonna take questions from the board for the applicant. Um, take a break and then we'll come back and do public comments. So at this time, uh, questions from the board for the applicant. Commissioner Odoricio.
Uh, yes, can we go back to the, uh, that's right, thank you. So I heard you say that if you look on the lower right. Uh, so I, uh, let's look at zero, one, below that is twelve, section twelve, below that is section thirteen. So if you, your hand, yes, right here. Yeah, the way you described. The decision here almost appeared like we, we were running into more difficult. Uh, negotiations than we did with the other route. And I guess my question is that if this were to go into that gray area inside the fence. You could run it up and up inside the fence between the boundaries of the gray area and the red line, the red dotted line. The challenge will be, once you get up to section twenty-five, uh, you get into that Box Elder Creek issue of, of potential. I, it just, it's ironic to me that we're worried about the pipeline, but we're not worried about interfering Box Elder Creek when we put in a new runway. Uh, or taxi. So for me, the, they're gonna have to make changes at some point anyway and, and rip that Band-Aid off of impacting Box Elder Creek. To me, it makes sense that you, you still look at. Um, putting it inside the fence, running it up and then just take, maybe swallow on that frog now on how to address the issue of Box Elder Creek. When you're gonna have to eventually do it anyway, when you're putting in new runways and taxiways.
So on, on that commissioner, I can't speak for Den, but I. I could just envision if you're gonna rip that Band-Aid off. And let's say that as a result, you need to change the grade. Of the area to either channel Box Elder Creek, redirect spot Box Elder Creek uh or some of that effect. Um, now all of a sudden, between the fence and the property line, the grade has changed and you, you know, you're, you're below ground. Um, a very substantial distance.
Um. That's a good try. I know you're, I know you're trying to think.
No, no, no. And this is, this is just based on our conversation. This isn't a good try. I wouldn't, I wouldn't come up with this, but, um, but. You're not gonna be able to operate a pipeline in that area if you're twenty feet, thirty feet below, you're, you're gonna have to relocate. So then we relocate back over to the east.
Yeah, I, I, my question is, I don't know how they're gonna operate taxiways and runways there either. So. And it, this might be a question for Den, which is one of the benefits of having Den come back up and ask that question. Um. And then the other question I have is, uh, this might be also a Den question. Um, will Den be distributing any product out of Den? Um, or is everything that's going into Den end there because it's being used by Den? And the reason I ask is if Den is using this as a profit center. Um, for further distribution out into the community, that's not necessarily only an airport use. That would be more of a commercial use. That would make more sense to. Participate in the region of, you know, the people that are burdening the most from it, like in Adams County. So. I guess that's my question. Those are two tough questions, sorry. Thank you.
Brody Ayers again, uh, airport planning manager, land side. So first question, right? Uh, I think it's Brown Box Elder in, in relation to the airport and future design, correct?
Yeah, you got, uh, if you see, it's hardest in sections thirty-five and thirty-six. So literally have Box Elder going across here. Is that yellow a taxiway or runway?
Again, that's the current airport layout plan, right? And as things can shift uh of where we look at design and we're not even at, like we're. In thought process, right? We're not even at five percent design, but like to your point, uh, within that design process. We have to work with our local partners to look at Box Elder Creek and how, how we might shift that. Uh, but, and also to much to my chagrin of my summer intern, the airport is not flat. Uh, and so we have to really think through how we're going to lay out that runway and where that will go for grades. And what, how the endpoints will be within that, um, approach services, everything is based off of those endpoints. And how that will work within. The development and, and planning out of that runway, um.
Sure. So, and, and if the concern is Box Elder Creek, I would think like, and if, and if this yellow. Area that's identified is potentially shifting or just contemplative planning, then in reality. You could change your plan a little bit or be, you can actually run that pipeline all the way up, straight up into DIA property. Run it along, uh, to the left of where that is. And then you don't have to cross Box Elder Creek twice. And that would actually reduce the potential impact of Box Elder Creek in the natural environment and you stay within the DIA property. Especially if there is a little bit of flexibility and more work to be done uh on going through that area, particularly as you develop that areas. Thirty-five, twenty-six and.
Multiple beyond just that future runway, right? We have, we have a current runway and part of that process is looking at our object free areas are run by protection zones. All those areas have to have frangible items and right? So if, if you, yes, it's a fun word. Um, it means you can't run into it, right? And as, like, if you run into it, it franges, right? It comes over. So, um, you have to keep all of that out of your runway object free areas, your taxiway free areas, runway protection zones. So if you look to further north, if you were to run it straight up the, that boundary line, you're going to run into, correct? You, you would end up into all the, the current development that's there uh of our, our current runway. And that would impact all of the other operations that are happening today, right? So you'd have to readjust that runway as well. Um, so it's not just planning out this current runway, it's also looking at the whole picture and how the airport operates within the, the current route.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I was unclear. I was looking at to the left of Box Elder Creek, to the right of the current runway. That's what I'm referring to. To the left. There you go.
To the left.
There you go.
Yet, I mean, I think we're, we're doing the best we can to accommodate all the, the needs, uh, especially listening to the local stakeholders. Um, bringing this into, this would be super problematic for that future runway. And that's where we're looking at keeping that economic development going, making sure we're meeting that forecast demand from the FAA. Uh, and eliminating all like real big hazards that are gonna be happening within that area so that we can find that runway out in the best possible way.
I understand. That's why I was asking. I, I'm hearing that we don't have an answer on that. I know.
I don't think we're that far in the path.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm understanding.
We might be on page one if you're, um.
Right.
Uh, war and peace. So like.
Yeah, no kidding. That's what I would be worried about. And I understand adding a pipeline within the fence does create probably some additional. Challenges than the easy path outside of the fence in the unincorporated areas, but.
Very much.
My, my job is to try to make sure if we're worried about Box Elder Creek, well, there might be an option to not have to cross it twice. There might be a way to reduce the impact outside of the fence. And if it's being used predominantly for DIA purposes, it makes sense that they bear the burden of some of this crossings as well. Let's go into the question that I have followed up, which is, does DIA plan to distribute anything that goes into DIA out of DIA?
Not to my knowledge.
No, that's different answer.
Well, it's not, it's a good, like we mentioned before, like everything at the airport is based on partnerships, right? So our partnership with Adams County, our partnership with employees, partnership with airlines, the airlines have built a consortium and they own the fuel. At the airport.
So it's private. Effort. So what I'm wondering is that we can avoid. Maybe the staff can help me. There shall be no distribution from DIA outside of DIA of these fuels. Cause to me then it indicates that this is gonna be a distribution center, possibly for profit or otherwise. As opposed to what's being told to us today is that this is to feed and support the airport. Those are two different things.
Well, I can't speak for the consortium and I'll use Nick's words, uh, educated, right? Um, on the subject, but I can't speak for the consortium and I, that's not what my understanding at all, but, um. Right now we're, they're looking at building a two new storage tanks, right? And we, we have quite a bit of demand. Uh, and as you're able to have storage, you're able to have that security, right? If something were to go wrong with the pipelines, you have that stat ability to fuel the airplanes and keep the operations going. Uh, so that's a great thing to have of being able to have that fuel there ready to use for the airlines and benefit the local citizens.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have Commissioner Malika and Commissioner Pinter. Great, thank you so much. Oh, don't go away. Sorry. Um, just to kind of follow up on uh Commissioner Odoricio's conversation about left of Box Elder Creek. You know, we, your presenter did a great job at essentially telling us that anything could be built over a pipeline these days. And that there should be no concerns about economic development over pipelines. So. Does FAA specifically have issues with the pipeline being on Den property?
There's pipelines on Den property, right?
Okay.
Um, but the big issue is putting that underneath a runway or a taxiway.
Oh, is that not allowed by the FAA?
It's highly unadvised, yes.
Highly unadvised?
Yeah, you don't want to do that. That's not what you want to do.
All right, even though it's completely safe for all these other reasons that we've been presented.
Runway is a little different than a road. Runway is a little different than a parking lot. Runways are built many feet deep. Uh, and start with all sorts of different layers and base and then build up to the concrete. So. To fix a pipeline underneath a runway would be very problematic.
Very problematic, okay. Um, but you do have pipelines already on the property.
Very much, we're, right, we're receiving fuel from Jet Head uh to the north, but that's all outside the runway and operation area.
And outside the runway, okay. All right, that's helpful. Another question that I had, um, oh, I think I lost it, dang it. Um. Yes, the revenues, okay. So, thank you. Um, so there are revenues that. Den is benefiting from, right, for having this pipeline, correct? For, for selling the fuel, being able to sell the fuel on their property or how does that work?
That's outside my expertise.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I know land use, I know transportation, I know, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's outside my expertise.
Okay, we could have a different speaker then, that's fine. Anybody who could speak to the revenues that Den will be, yeah, who owns the fuel?
I believe Ms. from United Airlines would like to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Malika. Ms. Ramon Cordaro with United Airlines. Uh, representing United's government affairs uh entity.
Yeah.
Um, but with some familiarity of uh the fuel consortium that has been referenced.
Yeah.
Um, the fuel consortium is a LLC founded by the airlines that serve Denver Airport. That consortium currently owns all the fuel infrastructure, including the tanks that were referred to before. And they purchase fuel. From Magellan or other third-party refiners or producers and bring it to them for their sole use. They, they do not sell fuel outside to anyone else. It's only for their own consumption.
Okay, that helps answer Commissioner Odoricio's question. Okay, so it's actually the airlines that own the fuel that Magellan is gonna be.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Thank you so much. That's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter.
Thank you. And my question is right along this line of um inquiry. Thank you to my colleagues, Vice Chair Malika and Commissioner Odoricio. I really appreciate the way you put this together so that we have all the factors here to be able to answer these questions. I think, um, I'm getting hung up on the fuel might be available for CASP or the pipeline might be available for CASP use. Or there might be other uses in the future, then finding out that what's moving through the pipeline is owned by a consortium of, like, I'm just, I'm just having a little like. Misunderstanding or hard to understand about like what opportunities, if this impact is exclusively going through Adams. Primarily in this moment, at this juncture, and frankly Aurora Adams is Adams also, though we don't have land use authority in the City of Aurora. We're aware. Um, the benefit part is the part that I'm getting hung up on for my Adams County residents. I fly United all the time, Ms. knows, I know, I see him all the time. You know, I got my explorer card, love United. Um, but that's something I use as an individual and pay for the privilege to fly United and love the experience. It's great, most of the time. I mean, yeah, a lot of the time. I mean, yeah, a lot of the time, you're great. Um they don't control the weather. But I'm I'm sitting here as an Adams County Commissioner and my charge is what is of benefit to Adams County residents. And I'm trying to parse out what is of benefit to my neighbor, who is great, Denver International Airport. What is of benefit to my residents, what um and how and economically what is our future? And while you have a lot of valid concerns about uh security. Duplication of fuel reserves or fuel accessibility, issues with trains that were brought up, I'm trying to keep track of where I want to sit. Um issues with trying to make sure that we have diverse fuel sources, my colleague brought up. Potential diversification of reliance on a single refinery. There's a number of reasons why. That are valid business cases for this pipeline. What I'm trying to figure out is my duties to Adams County residents. As Adams County Commissioner and this comes through our community, but benefits and profits. Organizations that feed up to our neighbor. And I wish them well and economic success, but then at what point do I have my duty to Adams County residents? What is the economic availability for CASP? What does it mean to have any agency in access to running um anything fuel, et cetera, through this pipeline? To what point I'm just. Cause one of the original reasons offered, this would be of benefit to Adams County residents is additional um. Customers could use this pipeline. And I'm just trying to I'm trying to parse that out. And I'm trying to understand revenue and then we would purchase from. This consortium of airlines at Den, like at what point does that benefit? To either Adams County residents, Adams County Colorado Air and Spaceport, econ- economy of Adams County. Actually come in in a practical way as opposed to rising tide lifts all boats. I want my neighbor to do well as well.
Sure, a- absolutely and fair question. So just stepping back from a very high level. So as we've said before, One Oak, One Oak Magellan and its pipeline is a toll road. So we don't own the product. We we are shipping product to and again, the product in this pipeline, as we've said all along, is is jet fuel and other refined products. So any jet fuel that is coming to Den is being brought up here on behalf of the ultimate owner, whether that is the. The refinery who who produced it is gonna sell it once it reaches Den, or if it's United, who bought it and had to ship it up. So there there's that issue. Um then to the the benefits that were raised earlier for the the broader metro area. That's more on the refined products, that's the gasoline, that's the diesel, th- those are the things. So that comes into the market. That that is not gonna make its way all the way to to Den. That's gonna make it to a a a storage facility. That we then can ship into the market and um so that's outside. So um going to your question about. The the rising tides, that is a good example because if Den and Den is made up of many things.
Right.
But but one of the biggest drivers is the airlines. The airlines are servicing the passengers that are coming through. Uh there's also the cargo shipments that are coming through. People are using fuel. Those things lead to jobs. As Dan said. In. This slide, uh I believe there's ten thousand employees at Den that live in Adams County. That 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 does not take into account.
I think the number is higher the last time we checked, cause there are thirty seven thousand employees at Denver International Airport.
I think some of those might be for airlines. This is just for. Yeah.
That might be.
So um as we talked about, what are the direct benefits to Adams County and and you are right to raise those? Um if Den is growing and Den needs to hire more, that map indicates that its primary source of of hiring is Adams County. Um if if the airlines are growing and people are traveling more, um if they are, you know, uh parking somewhere, I. You know, I'm just gonna speculate, maybe some of those uh parking areas are in Adams County. Or if there are industrial facilities built to store the cargo that is being shipped or being transported. Most likely, as you guys said, uh you surround the airport. Adams County is gonna pick up the industrial development as it continues to go. So this is not, this is not just purely a play. Uh for the the in-fuel users to to benefit. They're buying that fuel because they are servicing the the travelers in Denver. They're there's they're hiring in Denver. Um there's growth occurring around that. So. Uh that that is, that's the connection back to to Adams County. And then on addition to that, the other fuel product that we're bringing in. That serves the broader community here in the in the metro area, including the residents of Adams County.
So tell me how. The other fuel product that you're bringing in, tell me how. How does it make it out of Den property to serve other users?
Yeah, so that wouldn't, that's not transported all the way to Den. We 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 have, we will have a facility, uh as we mentioned earlier, there's the Aurora facility. Um and we are.
Where? Can you show me on a map?
Which one do you want? This one?
Yeah, so so if I may, um and and again, I I wanna make sure that none of us are up here speaking for the consortium or for Den. Um but I do, I do wanna point out a couple of things. One is if there were any future plans to ever distribute fuel. Out of Denver International, I think we'd be surprised by that. Um because one, I think it would undermine the security of supply benefits that this project is is bringing to that location. But two, it would be very capital inefficient because um and this is where Jason was about to go, so. Uh where that's labeled Denver, Colorado, that is our Aurora terminal. So just south of here. That terminal today receives everything that moves up our pipeline from the Midcontinent and the Gulf Coast. And that includes gasoline, jet fuel, diesel renewables, as we mentioned earlier. What what this project is gonna do by by providing that dual ingress into the airport is we can divert jet fuel directly into Den. We can still pump jet fuel up our line out of Aurora, but that's gonna free space for us to bring other fuels for the local consumers here into the Aurora terminal. And 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 we already distribute those, so we have we have loading racks, uh we have infrastructure to load trucks out today. But we also have a lot of tankage there and a lot of that tankage is actually used today as essentially off airport storage. A lot of that tankage, there there will still be tankage there to do that, but you're also gonna have tankage at Scott City, the new storage that's being built at the airport. And so we're gonna actually be able to repurpose some of that tankage for some of those other fuels. And because that project and because of the way that we're doing this and optimizing between those assets is so capital efficient. That goes back to the point that we made earlier about moderating costs for the local consumers. So that's gonna provide the most cost effective, cost efficient way to get it here. Uh does that help?
It does help. I think I'm gonna have follow up questions. I know we had talked about a bio break after applicant presentation and it's been a good couple hours. This has been great. Um so I don't know I if uh questions for staff and sort of like just checking in with our staff utilization on how much time we have to evaluate. This proposal or checking with CASP and future economic opportunities and how that works from our perspective, how we had enough time to evaluate that. I just have a lot, the what you're saying is spot on and is answering my question. It is now raising other questions that I then need to go back and sort of check in with our staff on economic development viability, our community, the ecosystem. Of interest that we're trying to create to have a healthy balanced economy, as well as the cost offsets for the disruption to have this. On Adams County land and again, that role as an Adams County Commissioner, like what does that look like? Just thinking it through. Um but you have answered all of my questions I have and I would defer to Chair at this point about open new questions with staff or return after a break.
Chair, if I may, I just I just wanted to address you're you had one question about the Colorado Air and Spaceport.
Yes.
And how that would ever work. So again, we we contacted them again in September and they said they didn't have the 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 need now.
Right.
So the the way that would work is if they, if the Air and Spaceport comes and and has the need. And they say, hey, we want to, we want to bring product on your line. Then they could do it or whoever wants to sell to them could could do that, just paying our our tariff to transport here. And then the connection would have to be made. So again, it's not like we would just bring it there and start knocking on the door saying, hey, are you ready to buy? There's there's more of the coordination between them based on their need and 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 what their timing is. And so that's what we're, that's what we're allowing for in the positioning of being right across the street, that if they ever reach that point. Um and they wanna have that conversation, we'd be in position to have that conversation.
Could I throw one more? So just one more thing, I I I know there at the end, you you asked again, you know, why, why in Adams County? Um and I think if we go back to some of Jason's closing remarks, I think the key is for all the reasons that he laid out. Is that that route truly is lowest impact? And so if you if you roll the clock forward and you think about some of the possibilities of having that line. Um and it has to be relocated uh for whatever future plans or maybe at Den. Um there there's costs associated with that. So a lot of this capital efficiency and cost efficiency that we're talking about, that ultimately gets. Passed through to the end consumer, I mean, if we're being real, um you know, w- we wanna, we wanna preempt. Uh those issues from being issues down the road because because that will create cost. And so. Uh again, I think I think this being probably the lowest impact route is is probably key to understanding why we wanna do what we wanna do.
Thank you. So I appreciate the line of questioning um from the board. I'm just gonna pivot a little bit. Um my question for the applicant is, first of all, thank you for doing a competitive process to put in the pipeline. When has One Oak, and I know I think you acquired the prior company or you've taken over this project, um have you awarded to a union? Shop? Union construction?
You know, um I can't speak for all of One Oak. I can only kind of speak for the refined products, you know, division. I have union employees right now. I have union and non-union employees. We don't discriminate. But we openly competitively bid and look for those individuals that have uh the highest quality, the highest safety records. Drive in that performance. So when we get into that, there's, we have contractors and subcontractors that come on board that have our union. We have union employees. That that's what I can can share with you.
Okay, I I really appreciate that. I think when Commissioner Pinter, different line of questioning, but benefit to Adams County is. The airport is a huge economic, it's the number one economic driver here in Colorado. So the benefit to us is. A lot of it is jobs and a lot of it is also small business who we also support. But looking at those jobs, it needs to be beneficial for everyone and I just want to know um to make sure. That our local. To make sure that our businesses that come in to support the airport or they come in to relocate to Adams County. That they do look at the local population and they do look at our union um partners for jobs. Because they provide a lot of benefits to employees, um to the work environment, that there's safety involved, that there's training involved. Um they have a pension program, they pay a livable wage here. Um. Part of our budget presentation is how expensive it is not to just live here in Adams County but in Colorado. So. I appreciate the work um of your employee. We love Future Forward, they're amazing. Um but what does a on-ramp look like for? Whether it's Magellan, when we look at our partners at Denver International Airport, of really incorporating some of those union jobs into your work. What does that look like for you?
Through this process, I I think, you know, ultimately, you know, we encourage mirrors to to, you know, evaluate and and work through and and. Hire local to uh source local um to work with the local um uh you know. Employ, you know, uh uh citizens of Adams County as much as possible. And and so that process, you know, you know, asking, they've already taken steps and and hired in some local contractors. Already, you know, having an estimated value of of a million dollars, uh you know, economic value, revenue. Not outside of those local hires, uh you know, associated with spending. So. In the issue, you know, we've already started those conversations driving, you know, engagement there with mirrors, pushing the, you know, the issues with them. And I, I'll just go back to, I apologize for having to continue to jump here. On this slide where where Joe in his presentation talked about it. Um again, the one million dollars is for Adams County, the references to the local. Office, that's Adams County, so that's ten in Adams County, twenty five subcontractor employees here in Adams County. Um and then local businesses um on the fence supplies and and other things. So. You know, again, we heard you all loud and clear at the August nineteenth and and we worked with with mirrors to get as much information as we could about this. Uh I know mirrors is gonna speak during during public, um just a little different relationship there since they are our contractor. Uh but they're they're aware of this and um as we've shown here, they are committed to Adams County. Um and they are committed to to working with the the local being the Adams County residents, trying to get as many opportunities as possible. For Adams County residents during the construction phase of this project.
Okay, I really appreciate that and look forward to mirrors coming up and speaking as well at some point. Um I wanna take just. I don't have a question, I just have a couple of comments. Um I heard a lot of great conversation and topics from my board. I just want. My family is uh. First of all, grew up here in Adams County and unincorporated Adams County, just a little bit east of the city of Brighton. From a workforce standpoint, uh my family combined probably has over one hundred years of service with United Airlines. So looking at. This pipeline, I do want to see, I I understand the the community benefit need, the residential need. Um I can just say personally that the airport has um. Employed, might be family, United Airlines for over one hundred years, if you look at. Um parents, sisters, um cousins and and aunt that have worked for United. So it is a place of. Um major employment here in Adams County and the employees, uh please come out Denver International Airport, be part of the. The Brighton, you know, Brighton has a their thirtieth parade of lights this coming December. Um you have a lot of really proud airline employees that call Adams County home. So I wanna say that. Not just for Denver International Airport, but for our airlines. I'd see, I know United was here. I also see Southwest Airlines um in the audience. So my biggest lens, and you've done a lot of work and I really appreciate it, my biggest lens at looking at this project. Is really the safety of the pipeline itself. And so had I had a crystal ball thirty years ago, which none of us did. We would have planned these things. We would have would have acquired um the best riderways, the best suppliers. And we would have built that into Denver International Airport. Um not knowing at the time, we were, many of us voted in Adams County, whether you voted for or against, it was really to pull. Um this region out of the biggest recessions that we have ever seen, where you couldn't give homes away in Brighton. So the seventy thousand dollar homes in that are were selling um then are clearly over six hundred thousand dollars now. So. We also thought that the airport, once we voted, we it would come in and we would all benefit immediately from. Whether it's peripheral or direct services or direct employment from the airport. Um the time really is now and we've been ramping up to this and, you know, Mr. Washington has made a commitment. Um along with leading the team and also working with the mayor's office, you know. Rampant up to a hundred million passengers and now Denver National Airport is on to yet another strategic plan. That once you do reach a hundred million passengers, what is that next, what is that next step of the airport look like? So. Commissioner Odoricio is right, saying that, you know, the problems we solve today are, you know, they'll be. Thirty years from now, we're gonna have a board, question this board, like why didn't they look at a different route? Why didn't they consider Box Elder Creek, the expansion of the airport, the runway? Unfortunately, I had a bo- a ma- a boss that he would say, you know, the time to make the best decision has passed. And I think that that is the case today, is that the time to make the best decision for a pipeline was thirty years ago. Um we just did not have the volume with a new fledgling airport. People were just really challenged, including workers. Not people in Brighton, but workers and passengers around the state that just had to get used to. Which felt like driving to the middle of absolutely nowhere. I know that I spoke at the Southwest Airline, one of the ribbon cutting events and. You know, the property owner out there had the best story about the only thing out here when I bought the land and I brought my family to come look at. You know, my new purchase and this is gonna be the future was he came to a field of groundhogs and I. Prairie dogs, been there, been there, done that, the prairie dogs. Um so I'm excited about. Prairie dogs, been there, been there, done that, the prairie dogs. Um, so I'm excited about the expansion of Denver International Airport. The, the opportunities, um, for employment for our young kids that are taking. C, CTE courses in high school that we have a partnership. Um, now with the University of Denver, the Colorado Air and Spaceport, they're gonna bring in, um. The whole suite of universities to bring air, you know, the aviation. Education in aviation to the Colorado Air and Spaceport. And so I'm excited for that. So as an Adams County resident, I'm excited for that. Um. And it's been a good employer and it's gonna be really our future because I don't see counties around the state growing. Continue to grow when we look at the landscape. We also take on a lot of the burden of the operation of the airport. So I'm not, I'm not saying that absent what we are taking on and you've acquired one hundred percent of the entitlement from. The landowners, we do ask, um, that anyone working, coming into work for Adams County, that you're a good neighbor. You demonstrated that in your presentation. You've looked at alternative routes in your presentation. Would I love for this to be on Denver International Airport? Absolutely yes, cuz it feels like the neighborly thing to do. I mean, something's gonna come through my, my place of where I work and operate and live. I'm be like, go talk to the neighbors and put it in their yard. And so I can't fault the airport. Um, obviously you have buy-in from the property owners as well. I do like the new route, I'll say that. Um, the entire route does fall in my district. Um, and especially, I know there was a concern from a property landowner down at the most southern portion. That you were splitting their parcel, you were sidestepping that. You did thread the needle of, I did look at the very busy map of. Whether it's water wells, it's open oil and gas, um, paths that are out there. You've done a good job doing that. I do appreciate the, uh, conversation regarding economic impact. Um, so. I won't go down my oil and gas, abandoned wells, all those challenges. I do want to thank you. For notifying us, um, as you do come across abandoned infrastructure and letting us know. Um, we're gonna have to lead with safety on this one. At least that's gonna be part of my lens. I also want to, and they're in the audience and I hope that they do speak. Um, our union shops and also our young people that many employees that are watching, shockingly, they do watch this. Um, that's, they have an opportunity working at the airport. They have the opportunity of travel. I don't know why Brighton didn't boom thirty years ago. It is the easiest commute to Denver International Airport, um. By far, and I just wanted to congratulate one of our partners, Southwest Airlines, on their new route to Anchorage, Alaska. So a new opportunity for those folks in Denver. Um, I do appreciate, uh, the work that has been put into this presentation and you've answered a lot of questions. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, and I would just echo everything you said there and, um, you, you are right, Southwest is here, United's here. Uh, Frontier and Delta also wrote letters in support. I, I, I would be remiss by saying that. We aren't very fortunate here in the metro area to have a very strong commitment from airlines that open up. The entire world, whether it's domestically or internationally, uh, here in Denver, which, which leads to a lot of opportunities. Uh, for not only economic growth, but personal growth for, for anybody in the, in the metro. So. Uh, thank you to the airlines for being here and, and thank you to the commissioners for hearing us out today and we, we appreciate the ongoing dialogue.
Okay, Commissioner Henson, and then I think we're gonna take a break.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll be succinct. I mean, I, yeah, obviously I agree with so much of what Commissioner Baca said. We understand the benefits as you've laid them out. Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, the, uh, you know, the airport, we, we brag about approximately, we brag about CASP all the time. And of course, the benefits of having Den as our neighbor. We, you know, that's all, tho- those impacts are easy to understand. The benefits are easy to understand. I'm looking at this one million dollar in reven- one, one million dollars in revenue to local subcontractors and vendors and I'm thinking of it as a pie. And how much of that is going to vendors and how much is actually going to subcontractors and the people doing the work putting this pipeline into the ground? And I'm ma- I'm anxious to hear from mirrors and I know we have union partners in here as well. I wanna hear from them. Because part of the benefit, economic benefit that. I have spoken about being committed to upholding and fighting for in Adams County is that the people doing the work are earning a wage. That allows them to have, to choose to live in Adams County, to choo- to live where they choose and to make their lives here. And wages that don't do that are in the long run not beneficial to our community. And I have to, and that to me is, is as paramount as safety. And looking at Box Elder Creek and, and Katie had to leave now cuz I have questions for staff about. What the impacts of that creek are. Is it gonna be moved? It's, if it's gonna be moved, can we move it? What, what does, what does that mean for future development and what are the impacts to the property? Not just economically, you've cleared the way for economic development, but there's a toll that, that is ta- that is taken on the land when the pipeline goes in and is functioning. And those are all things that, um, are impacting Adams County. That is, you know, we're a critical piece of getting this, this fuel. To Den and that, uh, is something that I don't. That, that is very paramount in my, forefront in my mind. I'm sorry, I'm not making sense right now. It's paramount to me. And how the residents of Adams County benefit from being the neighbor, allowing this pipeline to get the fuel to Den.
And, and thank you, Commissioner. I, I would, I would say this, that. Um, I have stood before this commission, uh, on behalf of, of Magellan. Um, on a pipeline that was running product out of Colorado. I've stood before this commission, a different variation of it, for other pipeline companies taking product out of Colorado. What is a little unique and, and my own word special about this, we're bringing product to Colorado. Uh, we are bringing product to Colorado to sustain jobs, to sustain economic growth, to, uh, enhance the airport's ability to grow. Hopefully, arguably, Adams County's ability to grow. Um, and so as we stand here before you today, this isn't a. Hey, we think we're gonna provide economic benefit for six months, twelve months, eighteen months of construction. This is going to provide economic benefit during construction, after construction. Uh, as I mentioned last time. Uh, One Oak, I, I believe, and I can get this confirmed during the break, but I believe One Oak is pays roughly two million dollars in property taxes to Adams County. That, that will only increase, um, and so we are committed to being good neighbors. Um, I, I'm confident that I will put words in, in other people's mouths here that are here to speak today, but I believe they're confident to be good neighbors. And I, I would just be remiss if we didn't focus in on the fact that this is bringing product to Denver, to Adams County, to the airport. Um, that will have a sustainable economic impact for the, the very long term.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, so let's go ahead and take a break. What's the pleasure of the board? On time.
Chair, I think we might need at least twenty minutes to allow people to get a bio break, maybe grab a, a snack, a lunch and then come back. So I would propose a minimum twenty minutes.
Okay, so we'll come back at about twelve fifty-five.
That works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, time is twelve fifty-seven, so let's go ahead and reconvene the land use hearing case. We left off with commissioners asking questions of the applicant. So at this time, I'd like to open the public comment. So Erica, do you have anyone sign up for public comment?
We do have two people signed up today for public comment. The first person is Frances LeVar.
Okay, will you please come down and state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon. Frances LeVar, Managing Director with United Airlines. Home address is four zero three-three Johnson Avenue, Western Springs, Illinois. Good afternoon, Chair Baca, Commissioners and Staff. As mentioned, my name is Franee. I'm Managing Director of Corporate Real Estate with United Airlines. I'm responsible for all United facilities here at Den International Airport. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for your kind words earlier on United, especially with your family ties. Really appreciate that. I want to begin by expressing our appreciation for the thoughtful and diligent approach this board has taken in reviewing the Den Oak Magellan Pipeline Expansion Project. We understand the significance of this decision for Adams County residents, for the businesses and for the environment. United employs thousands of Coloradans with upwards of fourteen hundred well-paying frontline union jobs held by folks living right here in Adams County. We're proud to call Denver International Airport one of our largest and fastest-growing hubs, with over five hundred daily flights connecting Den to communities across the country and around the world. The success of Den is directly linked to its partnership with Adams County and will help define the economic vitality of the broader Denver metro region, Colorado and beyond. I believe your Economic Development Director, who is in the audience, can likely speak to this better than I can, certainly. That said, there is not an insignificant number of Adams County businesses who also employ Adams County residents that depend on the airport to expand, to grow their own operations and sustain the county's economic base. This pipeline will enable that future growth, both direct and indirectly. For this reason, we strongly support the One Oak Magellan Pipeline Expansion Project. This pipeline is not simply a matter of convenience. It is essential infrastructure. It will ensure a secure, reliable and sustainable fuel supply to Den International Airport. Today, as we talked about, nearly all jet fuel delivered to Den arrives through the limited existing infrastructure or by truck. This creates inefficiencies. It leaves the airport dependent on a singular pipeline and refinery source and adds truck traffic to local roads. The new pipeline would enhance fuel redundancy and reliability, reducing the risk of supply disruptions that can ripple across the national air transportation system. It would support Den's strategy to grow to a hundred million annual passengers, ensuring that the airport and the entire region can continue to grow responsibly and sustainably towards that hundred million annual passenger goal. It will also enable the future delivery of sustainable aviation fuel, supporting the long-term environmental goals of both United Airlines and the state of Colorado. And last but not least, it will reduce truck traffic and related emissions in Adams County communities. In short, this project strengthens the airport's fuel resiliency, promotes environmental sustainability, and supports economic opportunity for the thousands of Adams County residents whose jobs are tied to the airport's continued growth. United is committed to being a good neighbor and a long-term partner to Adams County, as well as the city and county of Denver. We recognize the importance of collaboration and transparency. And we fully support Den's leadership in working with you to address any questions and ensure community benefits from this substantial investment. Finally, if I may, I'd like to briefly mention and thank Adam Paul, who is here in the audience representing Mayor Michael Johnston's office at our request in support of this action item under your consideration. And so on behalf of United Airlines, thank you for this consideration and for your continued partnership. We look forward to working together to make this project and the future success of Denver International Airport a shared reality. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Erica?
Sherri Hall. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Sherri Hall, the Director of State and Local Affairs at Southwest Airlines. And my address is nineteen oh seven Rue de Saint-Tropez in Austin, Texas. And I have no idea how we got a French name for our street. On behalf of Southwest Airlines, thank you for your leadership in ensuring Adams County remains a place where businesses can grow and communities thrive. We also want to echo our colleagues' comments at United Airlines in a deep appreciation for your thoughtful consideration. I'm speaking on behalf of Southwest today in strong support of the proposed One Oak Pipeline through Adams County that will directly serve Denver International Airport and provide extended economic benefits and opportunities for Adams County. The One Oak Pipeline represents critical infrastructure that will safeguard Denver's ability to grow while creating ripple effects of economic opportunity for Adams County. Adams County has recently seen, on April second, twenty twenty-five, when we were all in attendance and proudly opened our new Southwest Airlines University Training Facility in Adams County. This modern center provides recurrent training for employees across multiple job functions and was designed with space for a twelve thousand square foot expansion. The facility underscores how Adams County's leadership and regional collaboration can attract major aviation investment and drive economic activity. Almost seventeen hundred Southwest employees live in Adams County as part of our eighty-five percent unionized employee base. They contribute to the local tax base and economy. And the proposed pipeline under discussion today will help set the stage for even more opportunities. As Den expands and secures its long-term fuel needs, Adams County is uniquely positioned to capture new commercial and industrial growth around the airport. A stronger fuel backbone for Den means more flights, more passengers, hopefully more flights to Anchorage. Thank you for noting that. We're excited. Which in support, which in turn support new hotel, retail, hospitality development in Adams County. Southwest currently has two hundred and day, two hundred and eighty daily departures with plans to grow. More aviation-related business is drawn to the area to support expanded operations and that includes more employment and fueling job and that includes more employment and fueling job creation and local tax incentives. In addition, a pipeline provides a safer and more environmentally responsible means of fuel delivery compared to trucks on the highways. And by reducing truck traffic, the pipeline not only improves roadway safety and congestion, but also aligns with the priorities of Adams County and Denver residents to reduce emissions, enhance sustainability, and minimize wear and tear on regional transportation infrastructure. It's not just about serving Den. It's about securing the foundation for Adams County's economic growth well into the future. With this infrastructure in place, Adams County will continue to benefit from new jobs, new business activity, and new investment opportunities tied directly to the growth of Den and its airline partners. And for these reasons, we respectfully ask the Adams County Commission to support and approve the One Oak Pipeline Expansion. We appreciate the thoughtful leadership and consideration today and value our partnership at Southwest Airlines, both with Adams County and Den, and look forward to growing together. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Erica?
That was everyone signed up.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up that would like to come down and speak under public comment for this land use case? Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Sergio Cordova with Pipefitters Local Two Eight, address is sixty-three fifty Broadway Street in Denver. Just a couple of questions, you know, and comments. You know, non-union wages for pipeline sectors are, you know, significantly lower than union wages right now, prevailing wage. And I know that's important for the Commissioners here. As best value prevailing wage is very important for Adams County. To address some of the information on training, I know between the two locals, seven ninety-eight and Pipefitters Local Two Eight, we spend about five million dollars a year in training. Would like to get more information on how much training Mears spends on their employees. And then we would like to get some clarification on the data center project. You know, with the new agreement that was made, we want to make sure that that project is still able to be built. And that'll be my questions, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience that did not sign up that would like to speak, please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, Ms. Baca, thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name's Scott Copper Smith. I live at two seven seven zero one Hopi Trail in Johnstown, Colorado. I'm the Executive Vice President of Mears. I'm over all the pipeline and the facility construction across the United States. I heard your question on, you know, livable wages. And I can assure you, Mears is here in Colorado. Our people that work for us live in Colorado. Some of the people that be working on this pipeline are part of a transient workforce that'll come in and work at a certain time of that project. It'll be started with local people and it'll end with local people. You know, at Mears, we pay very comparable to the unions. We offer 401K benefit packages. We donate to those benefit packages. You know, five percent on every paycheck to our employees. Our benefit program, our insurance for our employees is second to none. I have kids working for us that have had babies and everything else. And, you know, I'm old school. I got gray hair too, like. Yeah. But, you know, we, you know, I never thought there'd be a time where the dad could take off work when the mom was having a baby, right? But we do all that stuff now. I mean, it's a pretty neat time that we live in now. As far as training, you know, Quanta, our parent company, is a twenty-five billion dollar a year company. We have a very big training facility in Texas where our non-union employees train right alongside union employees. Quanta is one of the biggest employers of union people in the United States. When we're training alongside of those guys, Quanta doesn't care if they're union or non-union. What they care about is we're putting somebody out on the job that has the training that they need to succeed out there and not hurt anybody or themselves. I appreciate the time that you've given me to talk. The million dollars. There is Adams County vendors that we will be using on this project, cross-country pipeline supply, Buckeye Welding Supply. Those people, yeah, they employ people that live in Adams County. You know, we're going to be buying all of our welding supplies. We're going to be renting equipment, all the coating supplies. Everything like that will come out of Adams County. The, our, some of our vendors, our union vendors, that will be on the job, and they're Adams County companies. You know, our trucking, our hydrovac and stuff like that. I see the things blinking at me. It's making me more nervous, so. But I appreciate this opportunity and thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, anyone else that would like to come down and speak that did not sign up? Okay, so not seeing any. It's now an opportunity for the applicant's response if it's requested, so. Commissioner Pinter? Oh, okay. I am open to.
I'm happy to do the button. I'm happy to do the hand. Just trying to get in line.
Is there anything from the board that they'd like the applicant to respond to that came up under public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, happy to start. Hi. Good to spend some quality time with you today.
Same here.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate your willingness to respond to these questions. It's helpful to hear everything that y'all are working on. I think the one question that came up in public comment that several of my colleagues have brought up and came up in the last hearing as well is this, what is the workforce at Mears? Is it union? Is it not union? Are you, do you know if you have a prevailing wage policy? As a private company, that's optional on your part to have or not have prevailing wage. Do you have it when you solicited your general contractor? Because it's a GC format, right, from Mears?
If I bring Mears down?
Yes. Sure. And correct me, is it's a general contractor format, like you've, Mears has been hired as the GC? Yep.
Or the general contractor.
Do you have a prevailing wage policy?
We do.
What does that look like?
Our prevailing wage matches Bacon Davis. We are not using that on this project. But we do have it, and we do use it around the country in other predominantly union territories.
So why would you not use it on this project?
Because we didn't need to. It's not a government-funded job.
It is not.
Yeah, so when we do those jobs that are like that, we use that. Union, Mears is part of Quanta. Mears has a union arm and Quanta has a union arm. So we're both, we're union and non-union.
That's just something for me to think about. That's a big topic for me to make sure. Living wage means a lot of things. You know, McDonald's could come in here and argue that they have a living wage, but that's not the same as a pipefitter might get or a union contractor. And so just trying to understand when we talk about the jobs that we're bringing in, given how strong our union workforce is in Adams County and, you know, talking about representing Adams County, trying to make sure that our workers have a fair shot, that the jobs pay competitively. That's something that's really important to me.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. But again, I'm in, I live in Weld County, but a lot of our employees live in Adams County too. We're giving them a fair shot. We went out and competitively bid this job so they could stay employed. So our vendors that are in Adams County can supply material to this project.
Okay, food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, other, yes, Commissioner Hansen, Den Malika.
Actually, following in that same vein, I was wondering, so the gentleman from Mears, you said that you weren't required to use Bacon Davis, so therefore you're not going to. I'm just wondering, I mean, livable wages are livable wages. Prevailing wage exists for a reason. Unions exist for a reason. Would you make a commitment to hiring half of the workforce as union labor on this job? Or committing to a prevailing wage for the workers who are not union? To make sure that the people who live in Adams County who are doing that work actually are getting the full benefit of a living wage as they're making a major contribution to something that's going to have a significant economic impact on our county going forward?
So we have made a commitment to using subcontractors that are on our union?
Have you, is that in writing? And is there a percentage that you've made a commitment to? Is that in writing? And have you made a commitment as to a percentage of the workforce that you're committing to hiring union labor?
The people that will be out building the pipeline will not be union. The vendors that will be doing the trucking, hauling equipment, hauling the pipe to the job site, they are union. Everybody doing hydrovac, they are union. Traffic controllers, union.
So like the teamsters or the people, but not the actual people putting the pipeline in the ground?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you make a commitment to expanding that to include them?
That would be preferable.
Well, at this time, no. We've already bid the project.
Right, and I'm concerned that your winning bid was in part due to not, due to the wages that you're anticipating paying the people putting the pipeline in the ground. That's just, that's, I can't get that out of my head. I'll just be honest about that. So the wages for the pipeline workers will vary significantly from those of the other folks participating in this job on the, say, driving the trucks and whatnot?
No, ma'am. We pay very comparable wages. That's how we get the workforce. That's how we keep the workforce. We give these people a different, an avenue to work where they don't have to pay a dues. They can just work and keep their money, and that helps with the livable wage.
Well, there are different schools of thought on that, so that's my, that's my comment on that. I believe that was the question that I had particular to you for this moment. I have a couple of other questions. Can somebody explain to me what the, or what the projected property tax will be that will be paid into Adams County, say, over the next, say, upon the completion of the pipeline or over the next couple of years, so we kind of know what that benefit looks like?
If you can come down to the mic.
Yeah, I can answer, I can answer that. It'll be based on the valuation of the property here in Adams County. And we would know that after it's installed.
Okay, so, okay.
But, but again, the history has shown the other assets we have in Adams County do generate two million dollars, so.
Oh, your other assets generate two? Okay, thank you. I was, I was, I knew you said, I thought, I was asking my colleagues, I said, I thought, I heard.
Yeah, there's other, there's other.
The number two million and, but that's for me to clarify. Okay, so two million are generated, so you don't know what the pipeline will produce at this point. Thank you. What is the lifespan of a pipeline like this?
You know, I think in our August nineteenth hearing, we talked about, you know, if you maintain a pipeline and you do it the right way, as we've agreed to in the development agreement, it could go on forever, but.
Okay, thank you for refreshing me on that.
Yeah, you can, you can sit here and say a hundred-year life, if it's done the right way.
If it's, okay, maintained, so that can, so we're talking for the foreseeable future, is your, I'm assuming is the goal?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Well, that sort of answers that. I think I will hold for there and let other people ask questions and then circle back if something else comes up. Thank you.
Commissioner, can I, can I jump in? Before the break, Commissioner Pinter, you raised the question, I believe it was you, you can correct me if I'm wrong, on when was the last time one of our Magellan awarded a union contract on one of its pipeline projects?
I do not believe I asked that question, but it's a good one, so.
Okay, so I thought it was you, was it? And so we're happy, we were working the phones during the break. In twenty twenty-five, it was awarded on a North Dakota pipeline project. In twenty twenty-four, for a Wyoming pump station. In twenty twenty-three, for pipeline facilities. Somewhere in twenty seventeen, for a pipeline in Little Rock, Arkansas. And then in twenty fourteen, on the Saddlehorn project, and Saddlehorn runs through Adams County, a union contractor was the general contractor on spreads one and two. So spreads are, you know, the long strips as you start making your way on these long hauls. So we do, we do have that history. And as Joe Butler mentioned, he has employees at One Oak who are union. We are certainly not opposed to union labor, and our history would indicate that we've awarded those union contracts.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think I asked it. Thank you. Commissioner Malika?
Yes, I was hoping we could go back to your slide where you talked about the Mears, yes, this one right here, actually. The local impact. So it's talking about the million dollars in revenue to local subcontractors and vendors. One of the questions that I have is, how do we, how do we, I mean, this is a great promise that you guys have listed out in here. How, what does a probability look like when it comes to, like, I mean, you're showing this to us today, but how do we ensure that this is actually something that's always real?
May I talk to Mears real quick? Yeah, thank you.
So Cross Country Pipeline Supply is the vendor we are using in Adams County.
Okay.
As long with Buckeye Welding Supply in Adams County. Both of those guys will supply, well, Buckeye Welding will supply all the welding material, the gases, all that stuff, and the welding rods and all that. Cross Country Pipeline Supply is going to supply us with safety. PP&amp;E, they're going to supply us with yellow iron, the big cat equipment, all that kind of stuff. They're all going to supply us with Maruka bogies, everything we need out on a pipeline. We're renting a lot of the equipment from Cross Country Pipeline Supply.
Okay, so those are just all the suppliers you've already set up for this project?
They're, yep, they're out there working.
Okay.
And they're, and they're signed up.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. So then another question that I have is, so when it comes to local hiring and subcontractors, that is already established to be like local hire here, right? So I think, I felt like you mentioned that there's going to be a team that comes in to do this construction. Is this a team out of state, out of the local region, or are you really only hiring people who live here in and around Adams County?
So we are here in Colorado.
Yes.
We have people that work for us that live here in Colorado. Some live in Adams County, some live in Weld, some live in Arapahoe, wherever they live.
Okay.
As this project ramps up and gets real busy, we will bring in a transient workforce to supplement the local people that are already on the job. As the job gets to a point, the transient people will move on to another workforce or another project somewhere, and our local people will finish this up.
Okay, transient workforce, yes, that's exactly the words that you used.
And then they will be here to maintain it as well.
Okay, and then they're going to be here for maintenance as well, okay? And this transient workforce are folks that literally travel all over the country to do this?
What they do.
Okay.
They're welders, they're operators, they're people that chase pipelines from coast to coast.
Pipelines, okay. All right, that's helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that. I have additional questions for staff, so I don't know if you want me to hold those off here since we're doing questions just for the applicant, but. I'm happy to wait. About ready to wrap it up. Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry, I've one more. What's a percentage of the transient workforce? Because, and is their training specific to pipelines that cannot be satisfied by our local workforce?
So it'll probably be about forty percent, will be between forty and fifty percent probably. And the training that they receive, a week's worth of onboarding with us, we vet every person that comes in. And look, because they're a transient workforce, we work all over the United States. So some of these people are coming in from another jobs that we, that were. So some of these people are coming in from another jobs that we, that were already working for us. So that's, that's kind of how that all rolls.
And, so 40% of that workforce, and so what's the, is that going to go over the whole? What percentage of the job, of the time of the job will that be the bulk of, because that's half the workforce that you're bringing in, is that?
Probably 60%.
60, okay, thank you.
And, and just for clarity, and Scott, your spread of the project is Denver to where?
Lincoln.
Yeah, so we're just talking from Denver County to Lincoln County for the MERS. So the MERS is focused here in Colorado? Where our office is.
I just have one final question, and then we can move on to Commissioner discussion. What does bonding and insurance look like for this project?
So, where, where required, so for example, on state property, where we cross state lands, they, they will have some bonding requirements for restoration. And, and then insurance, we are agreeing to insurance requirements with the landowners. And, and if we have to go through condemnation, the statutes provide that you have to post the bond. If you reach it voluntarily, we have language in the easements that says what will, what will happen if we don't reclaim it properly. So, one, two, up to three in some receivings. But from a reclamation standpoint, we have state level permits that require 70% restoration. And so that's, that's what we're, that's what we're satisfying there.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so at this time, if you'd like to take a seat, we're going to go to Commissioner Discussion, and Commissioner Pinter, you want to lead us off?
Yeah, I think I have some questions for staff, I don't know if, I think that, okay, so we've got a couple, so I'll just get started and then we'll see where it goes. I think our questions have been on a similar theme. Thank you so much to the applicant, I know that was applicant and friends. That is quite a long morning, and I appreciate the detailed way you approached all of our questions, thank you so much. With regard to our staff, I think one of the things that has been up for me, I have two types of questions. One about economic impact and one about BMP best management practices in this situation. So starting with economic impact, it's always helpful to hear from a staff perspective if you agree, and this might be referencing your own materials previously presented, about the economic impact of this specific project and the benefit to our community. Can you comment on that? I see Director Jenny Hall right behind you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pinter. I think to really get to the level of specificity that what I hear coming from the board, it would require a more in-depth analysis than the current staff would be prepared to do. There's obviously a lot of high-level information that the applicant has shared, we don't have any reason to dispute that. But what I hear coming from you is really looking specifically for tax revenue, specifically for job numbers, things of that nature, as well as sort of a cost-benefit impact for the property owners in unincorporated Adams County. So I think if that is something that the board is seeking as the basis for decision-making, we would need to work with the applicant to have, you know, a more formally-prepared cost-benefit analysis with economic expertise to give you certainty in those numbers.
Right, thank you so much. I think a co-occurring question for me is impact to CASP, and I see Director Kloska as well. So I don't know if, okay, so you're stepping back, we're going to let Jeff take it. All right, whatever. So Jeff, from your perspective at Colorado Air and Spaceport, again, taking the Adams County perspective, if we're going to take the hit of the impact of this disruption, this construction, what benefit do you see for Colorado Air and Spaceport from your perspective? Or do you also like Jenny need more time?
Sure, no, I think immediately, the volume of fuel that we pump as far as jet A goes would support a direct connection to the pipeline.
Would not, is that what you're saying, would not?
Would not, in the future, if, you know, as we're working through this P3 with Altitude X, and, you know, there's potential for, you know, for other large operators such as like an MRO operation, there could easily be a justification to connect to that pipeline that's going to go right by our property. So, the layout, as far as CASP's concerned, works for us being right on the edge of our property, so we can connect to it if we need to in the future. But it's just sheer volume, only an airport as big as, you know, a Denver International, a large hub, can justify a dedicated pipeline like that.
Have you checked in with our potential P3 partners at Altitude X for their opinion?
On this specific connection, no, I have not.
Okay, thank you for that, that is something that I think could be helpful. So, thank you, I don't have any further questions, but I do have some for our land use staff, thank you, Jeff. So, with regard to the best management practices, I understand that Katie Keefe stepped out, but I don't know if someone could comment. There was a presentation, in the very robust presentation from One Oak, there was a comment on the numerous best management practices adopted. Sometimes it's really helpful to hear what was left on the table, what was not adopted. Can there, is there a staff perspective on anything that was important to you, that you did not see adopted as a best management practice for the safety, security, quality of the pipeline, quality of the well, quality of construction, safety best practices for this particular issue or land use issue?
Sure, Chase Evans, Deputy Director of Community Economic Development. So, the short answer is no. Adams County did work closely with the applicant to document and memorialize those specific items that were within the previous public hearing. And in going through that process, actually, was when we identified the need to beef up our language as it relates to orphan wells and potential flow lines. And so that was Katie, as well as Greg Dean, working very closely with the applicant. So, I'm not aware of anything that we have been requesting that we did not get. But in fact, we did get more than we initially set out to, as we worked through the process and identified potential other areas that we wanted to improve the documentation.
Thank you, you had previously said that this was a new route, a little bit of a faster timeline, and that more time to evaluate could be helpful. Is that still your position, having sat through the many hours of public hearing today?
Sure, I think what I can say is, I'm not aware of any concerns that staff have. I think the biggest concern for us was just that we were not able to follow our normal public process and identify any, we don't know what we don't know. So we don't have any public comment from unincorporated or Adams County, I'm sorry, unincorporated Adams County or Aurora residents that would be within the thousand feet of the new pipeline route.
Oh, of the new location.
So that's the, that's our, I would say, is our main concern, is that we just, like I said, we don't know what we don't know. We don't have any specific concerns at a very high level, I would say, moving it away from the floodplain certainly is a benefit at face value. We just haven't had enough time to dive into it in any more depth, as well as we haven't had any additional feedback from the community that may flag something that we otherwise are not currently aware of.
And, but, thank you for that, I certainly noted that concern and question, and I heard my colleagues murmuring, so they're probably going to ask about it as well. But with regard to the specific land that was previously being impacted, specifically with the data center project that was in the city of Aurora, that would have created additional jobs, economic development revenue, I have the letter, I believe, from Brownstein on behalf of their clients, saying that all their concerns have been addressed. As far as your knowledge, like, the data center will be able to proceed, and they'll be able to do whatever they want to do with their land. Their land value is no longer being so dramatically impinged.
That's correct, we're not aware of any, of any impacts. It's not within our jurisdiction, so we don't have a land use application to go off. But as far as we know, they revoked, they pulled back their objections, so as far as I know, there are no concerns from that property owner.
But that does raise the other question of, like, now that we have a new route, public outreach, new properties, okay, thank you. Those are my questions, Chair.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Other Commissioners, Commissioner Molika? Yeah, my question for staff specifically is, just because I'm trying to understand how, if there were any issues with this pipeline, what is a county required to do to respond? From like an emergency preparedness standpoint, who, what are some things that we would need to do if there was an issue with this pipeline? Like, if there was a spill?
Are you asking in a kind of an emergency operations perspective, or more of a financial liability perspective?
Well, all of it is financial liability if we have to respond, right? So, more in a emergency preparedness standpoint. Like, what do we do for spill, like spills that happen in Adams County?
Commissioner Jenny Hall, Director for Community and Economic Development. I think, so we have an emergency operations, or emergency operation management team. That is not within the land use team, that is actually out of the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
And I don't believe we have anyone here from that staff today who could speak in detail to that. Perhaps, however, the applicant would be able to speak to just sort of routine protocols, because pipeline safety is a much broader topic.
Yeah, well, and I guess really what I'm trying to get at is, I've never asked or thought this question before. If there is, if there is some type of emergency, at what point does the county need to respond? Or is this only a state operations thing? I'm just trying to figure out, like, what, how do we respond to emergencies regarding this pipeline? And maybe if that's somebody else that we need to ask that isn't here right now, that's fine. But that is a piece that I'm trying to just decipher of potential impacts to the county.
Sure, so I think that the immediate first responder, depending on what the emergency would be, would likely be the fire districts, which there may be multiple along this route. You know, as far as the county, I would say the county doesn't necessarily have a lead role in the emergency management of this pipeline.
Okay, so it probably belongs to the state then? I mean, it has to belong to somebody, right? They report it up to the state, does the state notify us, do we need to show up? Hello?
So the applicant, yes.
Join us again, please.
Great question, Commissioner. So, in the event of an incident, yeah, you go through the whole process of notifying, let's say, the fire department. Then the applicant or operator comes out, they're responsible, they report the spill up to Colorado Public Health and Environment. You go there, and then that becomes the regulatory entity that is involved. Obviously, the county is going to be notified as well, but the incident is reported at that state level.
Okay, that's helpful, because I was curious, if we ever take into account, do we need additional dollars going to our emergency preparedness team as the number of pipelines and this type of infrastructure goes through Adams County? That's all I'm trying to decipher here, is are we thinking about the longevity of our staff in terms of response when it comes to these situations?
That's a great question, I believe, and I believe it's noted, the Bennett Fire Department, in their comments as a referral agency, said something would need to be purchased for them.
Yeah, NOCS hardware requirements, I'm not quite sure what that is.
Gas monitoring device, so if they have to get out there, they could, they could know what they're breathing. So, we provide those.
You provide those for them, okay.
Yeah, and typically, when the first responder or fire department is saying, hey, I need, I need some equipment, that is usually purchased by the applicant, that cost is being pushed over to the fire district.
Okay, all right, that's helpful to understand. Because, again, just trying to think about, what are, what are the impacts to the county? And what are services that may result from an emergency along this pipeline? That, you know, could happen, cannot happen, regardless, it's important that we are thoughtful about that.
If I may, one of, I really liked how Chase described it. As we were working through with staff on the development agreement, one of the things that was added in was if we report an incident to FEMSA, because we would have to report it up to the federal level as well.
Okay.
And we make a filing with them, then we immediately deliver that same filing to Adams County, if it is, if it is that type of incident. There's other filings that aren't related to a spill or anything that are just more administrative. But what was agreed to with the county was that if we have an incident and we make that filing to FEMSA, we're making that, we're providing a copy of that to you all. So you have a line of sight on what is happening out there, but there are different regulatory channels that we're working through to get that cleaned up.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you so much. So, back to staff, are there any other county requirements that we need to be aware of when it comes to ongoing maintenance of this line? Is there any data that we review? I don't know, air quality, you know, water quality, I don't know. Is there anything other, like duties that fall to us when it comes to just kind of oversight of this pipeline moving forward?
Staff, if I may, sorry, I apologize, should have said this earlier, I was just informed by Joe Butler. Just as standard practice, if the county does incur any cost in terms of man hours having to get involved in an incident, we do reimburse them for that, so again, it's no cost to you all.
Okay, and is that written in some agreement somewhere, that that relationship goes some, that's?
It is standard practice on our end, if that needs to be added in, then we can add that in.
Okay, all right, well, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, great. So, if there are any issues, then we could potentially be reimbursed, that's what it sounds like. Let's see, I think that is all my questions for staff right now, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Adricio, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I will note that, and I appreciate you guys following, I had some bullet points before assurances, neighbors, labor routes, and big picture. I'll start with, I'll start at the bottom, no, I'm going to start at the top. Assurances, I want to appreciate, I want to say how much I appreciate the applicant coming back and working with our staff on assurances. And I appreciate Commissioner Pinter's questions about how do we, how do we turn promised BMPs, best management practices, promises that are made on the record into an actual enforceable record? And I think we've accomplished that collectively, both the board, working with the applicant, and our staff in this dialogue over the last couple of meetings, to really raise the bar. And I want to recognize that from the applicant, because by putting that into our development standards, by putting that into our development agreement, I mean, by putting that into the different areas that I heard today, I really appreciate that work that was done, particularly the staff and the applicant. So, I feel really comfortable with how you guys all collectively handled that issue of assurances, promises made should be promises delivered. The next one is about neighbors. I also want to say I appreciate how you worked with our neighbors. While there is a new route, we got to make sure we're not creating other problems with the new route. And, which is the reason why we're going to continue this today, obviously, is to explore the new route at the end of this. But at least we're kind of doing a level set and a milestone check right now, and I think it's very important for all of us. When it comes to the local hire questions, I think a lot of our questions come across like we're just pushing unions, we're not. But in our community, the unions are synonymous with safety, they're synonymous with training, they're synonymous with the benefits and the general welfare. And so, I look at the questions that are asked about local hire as being more broad, and they may come across as weird, but that's simply because that, in our community, quite often, that's really synonymous. So I just want to make that clarification here, is that I think it's fair for us to ask about training and benefits. When people are out of state, are they living at their homes and getting good sleep and make, being able to do? First of all, that local hire is important. And what I mean by that also is, when they are here, they take a little bit more caution to know that whatever they're building, whatever they're doing, is something that they're going to live with in their community for a long time. So that's why we tend to push, and I tend to support issues of pushing for local hire, because it does relate to the criteria here, which includes health, safety, and welfare. When it comes to routes, I appreciate that there was a new route, I don't think it's what I initially was contemplating, and I think that, no offense to the Den folks, I understand that, like, we've got to kind of pick a horse. Are you on the horse that it's too early to plan, or the horse that it's too, that we've already got a plan, so you can't put it through here? Which is it? And so, I think, I'm a little frustrated that we didn't have more contemplation or exploration of a route that is to the west of the creek, where you don't have to cross the creek twice. So again, we're kind of choosing two horses here, like, we care about the creek, we care about that, but we're willing to cross it twice. But we're not willing to look a little bit further into disrupting what might be a little bit more work at Den's level in order to keep it so you don't have to cross the creek, we could keep it on Den property. So, the route, I understand next time we'll come back, talk about the other proposed route today, but if there's still an opportunity, I would still like to see some route really explored and explained why it can't be to the west entirely of the creek. The big picture, CASP, I think this is an opportunity for CASP, it was surprising to hear that our staff had not really considered the potential opportunities or challenges, or whatever might be with this going right next to CASP, but I do think that we will be able to follow up on that. It was important for me to hear the big picture, that there's no redistribution from Den. This is not going to be some sort of commercial play, this is truly to support what is our greatest economic driver in the state, which is Denver International Airport. And Adams County, as much as we are hard and difficult at times, we are all in on the success of Den. You may not feel that today, because we're asking a lot of tough questions, but I'm going to tell you, we've doubled down multiple times on the success, and we're just making sure that we can do so and move forward with the success of Den, as well as the protection of the folks in Adams County. And then finally, I would like to know, do we have, do we have an estimate of, what's the benefit? And then finally, um I do, I would like to know, or do we have um, do we have an estimate of uh what's the benefit? And we could bring it to the next meeting since we met, like how much taxes will be generated by having the? The route through these portions of Adams County versus what we would lose if they were generated through the routing it through Den. And I think we might be able to get that. It 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 just provides a little bit of an explanation of the broader um uh impact. Which I think falls under the welfare category of the criteria. So uh I look forward to the continuing this, bring it back. But we're making progress and I appreciate everyone's work on this. I do recommend that um the applicant go back and, you know. Dust off and look at the local hire stuff and the routes a little bit more. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners for discussion? I'm just gonna jump in here. Yeah, we can do discussion and comments are fine. Yes, so um. I'm I'm a little alarmed to hear that you want a continuance of this. That's what I picked up from the comments. And the board can discuss, have that for discussion. Um, I do wanna focus that the on the application that's at hand and. You know, it's obvious to me that there's been a lot of work done, both by our staff, the planning staff. Um, preparing for this technical land use hearing. There's been um tremendous amount of work. Very apparent um put in by the applicant and to bring all the partners and the relationships uh to the. To this land use hearing case today. So I just wanna acknowledge um that the maps weren't busy. That's what the board likes, is a lot of detail, and I really appreciate um seeing the proposed route, seeing all of that information. There are a couple of concerns, and I think that this is also information that we can share with our staff on expectations going forward on land use. Uh, I think there is an opportunity for future. I have to think in the mindset through this process is what would a board in thirty years? Wish that we would have asked today, and I think a board in thirty years, maybe three years, to be honest with you, could be thirteen years. Um, depending on how our negotiations go or how we continue um our partnership with Altitude X. Who is going through a due diligence, Altitude X is our part P three partner for the Colorado Air and Spaceport, of really vetting that. And so we may not need fuel capacity today or other capacity today. I would think a future board would say, if we wanted to tie into the line, what are those challenges going forward? So that's one of them. I don't think we completely solved, and I do appreciate um the response. All, you know, it was thorough from mirrors on your hiring practices. We just were not. This application just did not come before us at the time all of this activity had started. So I think we're in a situation of, you know, the best time to make um a decision has already passed. And we kind of, I I don't want to give up. I think that there is an opportunity for mirrors to really invest um locally. Same with your volunteer that won the Adams twelve in our workforce development here in Adams County. I think that there's still an opportunity if you want to, we have a an annual meet with our eighth graders. Um, events countywide, we brought in five thousand eighth graders to talk about career um opportunities for them. So I think that what we're looking for is not only short term investment of employment, but long term investment of partnership. Um, I do support this project for a number of reasons that I've already stated. I think one of the biggest benefits. And while safety is a huge concern, is that Adams County also includes Denver International Airport, city and county in Denver. Many of the metro area counties is that we're in a non attainment air quality um boundary imposed by us by the EPA. So the more we can lessen the truck traffic for Denver National Airport, I know it was in the first presentation. How many millions of barrels equals it equated to? I can't remember the number of how many truck trips that that would be just to the airport itself. So with that in mind, um so there's the non attainment area, which is the air pollution. It's also the congestion of, you know, cars and all the congestion that we see on our roadways. And I think that that is a topic that I would like to explore more. We've already started the discussions. Barry, I see you out there taking frantic notes. Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate it from Denver National Airport. Is this partnership of how do we move not only passengers, but how do we move employees to and from the airport? Um, as you continue to expand out there. Um, so with that, I think that there's more board discussion to be had. Um, so those are my comments for right now. So Commissioner Henson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, uh thank you to everyone who has stuck with us this uh this morning slash afternoon. Um, I definitely wanna say thank you to the uh to the applicant. I know you've done a lot of work. And really, and highlighting the bullet points from Commissioner Odoricio and the requests from Commissioner Pinter. You have incorporated our requests in into your your presentation today and the work that you've been doing. Along with securing, you know, right of way uh for for the route. So I definitely appreciate that. I've the, I don't need to restate what we understand all to be the net economic benefit to the community. Uh, for this project and for being neighbors to Den and to having them here in the in the heart of surrounded by. Held in a big hug by Adams County and all that that entails. Um, ha- having said that, one thing, I mean, because I see such great benefit for the future from from this project, I say it does. And this is not gonna be a surprise, I don't think, to anybody who was listening to me a few minutes ago. We had an opportunity, I feel, and again, this was work that happened before. This came to the board to make sure that the people who are making this pipeline possible, the people are putting it in the ground. Are not maybe going to share in the equitable, most equitable benefit. Saying that you don't have to pride a certain wage just because it's not required is not, is not my favorite answer. Um, I will be very candid about that because these are the people who we represent in Adams County. These are the heart and soul of Adams County, the people who do the this work here. And I don't wanna leave anybody behind on something as we're talking about a very exciting future. So having said that also, um because some of those those, while some of those people who are affected by the new route are in the city of Aurora. They are still Adams County residents, and so I would also support a continuance today because we have to make sure that we are contacting everybody. Who's gonna be potentially impacted by this new route. I just think it would be, I just can't in good conscience support something. Or give a green light to something where we don't, as as our staff said, we don't know what we don't know. We need to find out what we don't know and then proceed from there. Um, trying to be as efficient as as possible for all parties concerned. But um the people of Adams County who are impacted by this pipeline are stakeholders too, and we can't just uh gloss over that. So I think, again, thank you, everybody, for being here. This um. There were a lot of topics covered today. This is important work, and I thank everybody for your participation.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, just chiming in, um I too would support a continuance, just to start there. Um, so here's where I'm at. Y'all started and we had this many issues, and then we keep having a conversation and the number of issues and the scope of what we're talking about gets smaller. You've done a really good job of talking about the incorporation of best management practices. Um, obviously, the case for reducing truck traffic is significant. Obviously, um the rising tide lifts all boats, economic development at Denver International Airport benefits uh employees that live in Adams County. Love our neighbors, y'all are great, um flying out theoretically, assuming our government's still open on Sunday and hanging out with all of y'all. Um, I just wanna say, like, the issues that remain for me are much more narrow in scope than when we first started our conversation. Also, um it's about due diligence, cuz once we say yes, I can't take that yes back. And so I wanna be confident. And to hear my staff say that we haven't done the full public notice, public process. Um, for impacted land and impacted parties gives me pause. Um, and I wanna make sure that when we say yes, I can say fully yes, and that that everything has been discussed, noticed, public engagement has been met. So that's a procedural issue that to me um raises a flag about getting it right. So I don't know if that's thirty days, is that two weeks? What does that look like? Um, to make sure that Ford and you guys are chatting, so I'll ask my, the other question. Um, is this ongoing question that we all keep discussing, because again, we started with this many issues and we're now down to just like, for me, two things. And that is local hire, who are the employees who are actually gonna be putting the pipeline in the ground? And how are they connected? I understand the corporation mirrors is connected to Colorado. That's great. Love our neighbors in Weld. Y'all are great. We collaborate with Weld on a number of things, um particularly as counties working together. However, some reassurance that there is local hire um would be really helpful and what that looks like. And you talked a lot about um people working on your pipelines across the nation and just bringing them in for the. You know, whatever weeks were required to complete this work and then they continue on their journey. I'm sure that's a great wage for them. My concern, Adams County Commissioner, Adams County jobs, Adams County employees, Adams County residents, that's my view. And so I, you know, for me, I'm down to sort of like these two topics. We started with a hundred, down to two. Uh, local hire, who who's being hired, who's doing the work? And then the last piece is making sure we're legally compliant, this um notice to landowners component.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Malika?
Oh, did staff have an answer on?
Yeah, if if I could.
Yeah, attorney has an answer.
For process, I think, I I know that this is a little confusing, but the way it was presented initially today in the staff presentation. Is we kind of saw two avenues potential for today, one being that the board could approve or deny the first route. That had already been properly noticed, already gone through the planning commission and and discussed at this hearing before. Our concern is that the new proposed route um does, is a substantive change to our initial application. That would require it to go back to our planning commission and then be properly noticed to those applicants. I I will tell you that the applicant has a different perspective on that, um because the change is only in the city of Aurora. But our practice has been with these types of pipelines that we notice um residents within the thousand feet, even in the. Incorporated areas. Um, so I think to be consistent with our notice and practice. And then again, because the application has changed substantially since the planning commission, our recommendation would be if they wanna go with a revised route. That we need to go back to the planning commission, which would mean we don't set a date certain for a continuance to this board today.
I have a clarifying question. Um, thank you uh for that. I think the reason that's a material question for me is frankly going back to so many papers. The Brownstein letter and um the removal of the restriction around the um data center. Or potential land value for alternative economic development in Adams County in the incorporated area of Aurora. That was a huge factor for me in narrowing the scope of issues. And so if city of Aurora to, it seems like the new route and the uh land value. Preservation for economic development are tied. And so for me, unfortunate, I I really didn't think you were gonna say that. I thought you were gonna say we could give them time, give more notice. Have um a continuance to this body. Um, I don't know if y'all wanna have a break, like what that, like I'm just kind of like. For me, like that makes it really complicated because a significant factor in that narrowing was that we no longer have this issue of choosing winners and losers. For economic development. And if that is contingent on the new route and the new route forces us back to planning commission, I feel. Unfortunately, that planning commission is the way to go, and I know that's a whole process. That's beyond just like, hey, let's give you thirty days to get some more public notice out. So I don't know what others think. I'm talking in real time. Hi.
Hi. What would you like?
I would like to hear.
Okay.
Yeah, I, it's, it is a unique issue. Um, your reference to the Brownstein letter. So the Brown, the Brownstein's client was the one further north, so it's the furthest northern city of Aurora track. So there was no adjustment on their property. There was no adjustment there. That that line had been proposed. It's in the city of Aurora, no change on that property. The the change occurs down to the south. Right at at the Arapaho County, Adams County, city of Aurora. Um, and that goes all on city of Aurora property at the request of that landowner. Um, and so that that's what's a little unique here. There's been no changes to the route. In unincorporated Adams County, which this permit would would control. Um, the city of Aurora is having us go back through, their their process is administrative. And they they do provide notice. Uh, Brownstein's client has provided comments there and was withdrawing those comments there. Um, so they will, they will provide notice. We have contacted those landowners as well. Um, so every, everybody has um been contacted. So the the issue for us is just a little confusing because the route in unincorporated Adams County. Subject to this permit is the same as it always has been. The change is occurring in city of Aurora. Understanding that part of Aurora is in Adams County, but that is controlled by another, you know, a different jurisdiction. Um, so standing here, it it's kind of like if I made a change in Arapaho County. Does that somehow result that I need to make a notice change in in Aurora or in in Adams? And I know those aren't apples to apples, but that's that's where we're at. Um, all the landowners in unincorporated uh Adams County. Have been noticed and and have agreed to the easements as presented.
Thank you for that, and thank, thanks for the clarify clarification. Um. I'm just gonna take that under advisement. I'm gonna turn to my colleagues, let them chat it out. That's really helpful for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malika.
Alright, well, my comments have now been derailed. Thank you, Emma. As you move forward, I was uh gonna move forward with the continuance today, but that apparently is not one of the options ahead of us. Um, you know, I I, for me, it, that public notice piece is very important to understand. Um, the the needs of these residents. I'm, I'm not a property owner in any of these areas. I don't know what um their concerns are to any of this, and the fact that we weren't able to follow our process makes me concerned. Cuz I like the process that we have. Um, and so I I don't really know if I am. Comfortable approving the proposed route today. Cuz that is the action we would be taking, correct, Heidi? We would be only approving the proposed route, right?
I I think you could do that, although I'm not sure that's even what the applicant wants. Um, or you can send the matter back to the planning commission for appropriate notice, and then it would come back to you after the planning commission. So we would come back with a date certain, but for now, the direction from the board would just be that um this matter should go back to the planning commission. Um, to consider the new route.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Malika, I know you're in the middle of it.
No, please.
I'm real confused on the like, why we have to provide notice. Please, wait, hold, I love you, you're great, but please. Um, because I'm hearing from applicant that there are no changes in our land preview area. And I'm hearing from you, more notices required, and I'm just, I need agreement. I need, I need someone to chat with somebody else and make an agreement and tell us if legal notice is required or not.
Sally Daggett from the county attorney's office, and just to clarify. When you, when the original route that, you know, went to the planning commission and then you heard um on August nineteenth. That notice of that route that's in black was given to all neighboring property owners. Within a thousand feet, whether they were in uh in Adams County, whether they were in unincorporated Adams County or um incorporated Adams County. So with the moving of the route mile to the west and the southern end of it. Um, there are seven affected property owners who did not get any notice um of this new route. And admittedly, three of the seven are um owned by Property Reserve Inc., which has been dealing with. Um, the applicant, and so presumably is okay with this new route. But still, there were tho- those four other property owners that didn't get notice. So that's one factor to consider. The other just is that part of what you're proving today is not just the conditional use agreement, but also the development agreement. And if you look at the development agreement, there's an exhibit attached to it, which is the basically the construction. Detail for the entire length of the route in Adams County. And that, what's in your packet is those, that exhibit A to the development agreement is dated July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. So we don't have the updated set, plan set for the development agreement. So e- even if you wanted to approve the new route today. Um, there's a concern that we have, at least at the staff level, about not having the proper exhibit to the development agreement. For today. We, the, we haven't even seen it, so um I I think the applicant has said, like, you know, just finished it yesterday. But we haven't seen it yet. So that's just a concern from the staff perspective.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Well, that that's just one more reason why we should do the continuum, set it back to the pu- uh planning commission and let them um uh put this out. Make sure we have the transparency necessary for both of the issues that uh our county attorney just mentioned, as well as if there is still a chance to to. To reconsider or at least come back with some better answers on why uh the uh routes other than, well, we just.
why uh the uh routes, other than, well, we just haven't gotten around to planning that far ahead. Um, uh, on the issues that I had about the Adams County portions of the route, so I think we can do the continuance, I would rather do that than risk a denial today on um other routes. I think we 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 all think that this, it's at least what I'm hearing, is that there are a lot of benefits and the true north is that overall uh as we try to get to, yes, let's do it, but let's do it in a way that we all feel more comfortable, that's kind of what I'm hearing. But I don't have a crystal ball, but I would recommend that we send this back to the planning commission that resolves the notification and transparency issue, it also helps address the issue that our county attorney just mentioned, and then it gives an opportunity uh for these other conversations of things that did not entirely close the loop on today. That would be my recommendation, and if the board is okay with that, I'd be happy to make that recommendation.
So I appreciate that, um, I've been at this a while, I know how to count the votes and understand that I'm in the minority here. Um, I appreciate the explanation from the county attorney's office, I do wish that this board having new information, not having all of the documentation, not even outside of public notice to the landowners, that we don't have the documentation for the development agreement to go forward, that the board would have taken um more initiative to either continue three hours ago, if not almost four hours ago, or listen to what the original proposed route is, that is my my biggest concern. So I'm trying to reconcile all of this in my head of um, we are where we are, I don't want to say for a third time that the best time to make a decision has already passed, but it has this time around. I'm a little spicy about it because had we made a decision four hours ago, we wouldn't be in the position we are today. Um, we could have said, all is well, we can continue, and I just am feeling, I don't know where to reconcile that, and it's it's very frustrating, um, we hear all the time, people complaining about mostly um some of our other jurisdictions that the process is inefficient, that the board is a challenge, that the elected body is a challenge, they're not getting the information that they need, I don't want to be part of that, I don't want to be a jurisdiction that is going down that route. So I think that we open it up for notice, but the fact that we want to use testimony provided by the applicant, provided by the partners that came and spoke under pop, public comment that we are going to leverage, they came in good faith. And I think it's deceitful to say, and we want to add all of this, under the guise of, we have to, we have to, we have to go with the notice regardless is what it sounds like, but we have all of these open ended questions as well. So I'm a little frustrated with that whole process, um, but I know how to count the votes, so we are where we are.
Madam Chair, uh if I might, um, what, I would ask the county attorney, if we were to propose a a continuance to go back to the planning commission and then set a date in the future, is that how we would do it, since we do not have a date today?
It it's a referral back to the planning commission, and you don't need to set a date certain, and I think um, uh, some of the timing going forward is gonna depend on when, when the applicant gets us this new plan set. And I think if they get it to us right away and staff can get their referral um requests out and the notifications, they could be on the planning commission in in November. But if there is a delay in the applicant getting that information, then it may not be on the planning commission's agenda until December. So, um, you could be either seeing this as the board of county commissioners in December or January. Again, I think it's dependent on the applicant and how quickly they can get us the information.
Got it, all right, well, with that said, I will make the comment and then I'll make a motion. I do think that um today, yeah, it was long, but I do think there was a lot of things that were accomplished and clarified that I do look as big wins for everyone in the room, including the uh, the the notion that some of the assurances and best management practices are going to be uh put down into the development agreement and other portions of the application. I also believe that we did address some of the concerns with at least some of the neighbors, um, I do believe that um, those are two big things that I thought were were beneficial. Uh, I do believe that we also got clarification that this is, since there's not going to be a redistribution from Den, uh, but we do see that there's, we did clarify that there could be a potential benefit for CASP and some of the others. Um, I don't think it was a total waste of time, I do believe that, I I I personally would like to walk away thinking that there was some really good uh progress made today and uh um, and I don't, and I'm not going to hold my breath that they're going to come back and say that their route's going to change in the Adams County portion a great deal based on uh the pushback that we got from Den on that. Um, even if I disagree with that, the answer was not very uh full or clear. Um, with that said, I still would ask that we, um, I make a motion, if I might. Uh, I move to refer the conditional use permit, RCU two thousand twenty four dash forty six to co- the planning commission to provide notice to property owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the updated route.
I just one, have one final comment, I'm not disagreeing with that the discussion was fruitful and that it was needed, and I appreciate that Den's participation in this. Also, our major airlines that sat through this uh land use hearing case, I am frustrated with the process of vetting this, that people took time out of their day which does not result in a resolution today, is very frustrating to me. I want to be fair to the applicant, that we get your newly proposed route um documented and submitted as part of the development agreement. Um, I think that's both parties, both the county and the applicant, all the partners um, did come with their, you know, you did your due diligence and you came here uh genuinely, genuinely expressing your concerns, your comments, your support for the project. Um, you're disdained for portions of it, and I appreciate the dialogue. It's frustrating for me as the chair to sit here to listen to four hours of testimony that has a net result of no vote today, other than to continue this program and the potential that, you know, we're I I'm done shooting for perfect, I think we have to get to what is reasonable, and if ninety nine point nine percent of our answers are reasonably answered, I'm not, I don't know how much skin I can put in the game to get to perfect of fighting for that point one percent, it's just really a challenge for me today, so I'm just very frustrated with the process.
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry to report, I do not have a voting button, can we do a voice vote? I don't know why, I'm.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Henson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Because the packet is incomplete, I have no other vote but to do a yes vote today because we don't have the documentation needed to go forward.
And the motion passes five to zero. With no additional items, our our agenda, we are adjourned today at two fifteen.